staff with a link to a short survey. We posted information on our website as well. By law, a minimum of 20% of the money must be used to address learning loss over the last year. Expenditures should meet the immediate needs of students and align with the division's long-range goals. As a reminder, WJCC Schools is returning to five days a week in-person, in-person learning for the 2020- 21-22 school year. The American Rescue Plan funds are essential as we establish the new normal in our schools. This year is anything but normal with extended periods of remote and hybrid learning. Fortunately, our students and teachers are resilient. They've embraced technology and changed the way we teach and learn. As the year winds down, it's time to start, it's time to start collecting the thousands of Division laptops and tablets issued to students last fall. You can see the device collection timeline on the screen. Most students will turn in their devices at their home school. Virtual Academy students will drop off their laptops and tablets during a drive-up event at James Blair Middle School. Families with questions should contact their child's school. Speaking of the end of the year, I want to remind the public about upcoming senior parades down Duke of Gloucester Street, June 15th through 17th. Members of the class of 2021 will decorate their cars and take a once-in-a-lifetime drive down through the Colonial Capitol. We want to thank our partners at the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation and the City of Williamsburg for supporting this wonderful community celebration of our seniors. It is quickly becoming a highlight of the graduation season. Finally, I want to once again share graduation dates for the class of 2021. Ceremonies are taking place at Warner Field. Because of COVID protocols for school divisions, access is limited to ticketed guests only. Everyone in the community is invited to watch the graduations live on the school division's YouTube channel. A link will be available on the school division website before each ceremony. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my announcements for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Any other announcements from board members or reports? Excellent. Takes us to citizens' comments. So we have one comment, one citizen who wishes to address this this evening. Mr. Dowell, would you like to, uh?
Yes, Mr. Chair. It's at this point in our meeting where citizens are invited to address the board. Those citizens desiring to speak have submitted speaker cards to the clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. These speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their names for the record, and direct their comments to the chair of the board. It is the board's interest and desire that all comments are heard and respected. Hence, the citizens are asked to not engage in applauding, verbal outbursts of any other type during the presentations. Personal matters are not considered in public meetings. Therefore, the board requests that all speakers refrain from making reference to specific individuals in any form or fashion. Though the board does not respond to your comments, your comments are heard and appreciated. Each speaker is allocated three minutes to make their presentation, and the board asks that you respect this time limitation. Also, please be reminded that no time may be yielded to another speaker. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines will be greatly appreciated. And Mr. Chair, my directions are concluded, and we do have one speaker, that is Gaila Baumgart.
Great. Thank you. Come on.
Gaila Baumgart, I would like to first say happy retirement to Ms. Vasquez, principal at DJ, who really cares about her students and families and will be very missed. I encourage the superintendent to continue to ease restrictions as COVID numbers plummet. We are just a hair away from blue, the low level of transmission now. It's time to ease up. The plexiglass on the desks does nothing to stop COVID and is hard for my kids to see through, so it really needs to come down. There is less than a 1 in 10,000 chance of contracting COVID from touching surfaces. The kids should not be prohibited from browsing and checking out the school library books, and the staff should be allowed to touch a pencil that a student has touched. There is no reason our field day is virtual and 5th grade graduation is drive-through only. Enough with the virtue signaling. Allow kids to have as normal as possible end of the school year that they did not get last year. You can do a Swiss cheese model, but it is not okay to continue to treat children like a contagion and continue to have overly restrictive policies, including banning parents from the building. Our community numbers are low, and I encourage you to consult with the health team about immediate easing of restrictions. We know children are at low risk of complications from COVID. We know that there is little COVID in the community now, and we know that the high-risk and vulnerable people to COVID complications have been vaccinated if they so chose. So why continue these restrictions? For example, students not being able to sit next to each other in the cafeteria and instead having to play on their cell phones at lunch. You have to tolerate a small level of risk. Irrational safety guidelines do no good, are actually harmful, and discredit the public's trust in the school board and the school administration. Delay no longer. You do not need to wait for everyone to get vaccinated. If you actually want the students to come back to in-person learning and start tackling the learning loss, you need to create a learning environment in the schools that is tolerable for students and teachers, where they can have community and can teach and learn without being treated like they are not safe to each other, not safe to the staff, and not safe in school buildings. I also wanted to quickly say that no child should be given an F this year, but rather incompletes, and be given ample time in the summer and next school year to recover credits. Your decision to do online learning most of the school year has impacted families of color, essential worker families, students with learning challenges, and low-income families disproportionately, and I encourage you to really think about how you can prevent widening this disparity gap. Thank you.
Thank you. No other speakers? 6.01, review amendment of the fiscal year 21 operating fund budget.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Ewen is here this evening to speak to the change in the operating budget and will make a mini presentation this evening.
One second, so we, when we vote, we should do that. I don't know we should do it when we're at this point. Does that make sense? This parliamentarian?
I'm thinking if we're asking questions, then probably we should make the disclosure, which is sort of annoying, but we might have to do it twice just for...
Go for it.
Thank you. Sorry, Dr. Heron. Thank you, Mr. Chair. As a member of the school board of Williamsburg James City County, I acknowledge that I have an interest in the fiscal year 21-22. Oh, we're in the 2021 school budget because I'm an employee of the Williamsburg Health Foundation. However, I believe I'm able to participate in the consideration of and vote on the budget fairly and in the public interest.
That was 21-22, right?
No, we're amending the 2021 right now.
Correct.
That's why, yeah, that's why I corrected myself. Sorry.
As a member of the Williams, of the school board of Williamsburg James City County, I acknowledge I may have an, I have an interest in the fiscal year 21 school budget because my wife is an employee of the WJCC Schools. However, I believe that I am able to participate in the consideration of and vote on the budget fairly and in the public interest. Sorry about Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Ewen is going to present a couple of slides on the budget amendment this evening. Thank you, Ms. Ewen.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. For your consideration this evening, I will be presenting the proposed amendments to the fiscal year 21 operating budget to account for additional revenue that we anticipate receiving. This time last year, we were having a much different conversation about reductions to our fiscal year 21 operating budget. Our adopted budget assumed a reduction in education sales tax and state lottery funds of approximately 40%. I am happy to say that we have not seen a decline in these revenue areas this year. Based on the revised state estimates, we are projected to receive almost $5.7 million more in education sales tax funding this fiscal year than what we budgeted. Other state revenue is projected to be approximately $1.6 million more than budgeted, and we are anticipating about a $145,000 reduction in our federal and other revenue categories. Overall, we are projecting to receive $7,144,000 in additional revenue beyond our adopted budget. By adding this additional revenue, this will amend our fiscal year 21 operating fund budget total to $147,832,700. Adjustments to the expenditure budget are also necessary to maintain a balanced budget. The recommended adjustments to the functional areas are based on the original allocation within our adopted fiscal year 21 budget after allocating $941,525 to technology for the replacement of classroom projectors and teacher panels. Mr. Landers will be sharing information regarding this recommended purchase later this evening. After factoring in the recommended expenditure adjustments, our expenditure budget will also total $147,832,700. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Will you come to me? Any questions from board members?
Thank you, Dr. Heron and Ms. Ewen. I have a couple of questions. So, can, this is, you know, pretty late in the fiscal year. Can you help us understand the timing of that and why it's coming to us now as opposed to earlier in the year?
The approval of the sales tax flow-through from the localities had to be approved by each locality first. The city council approved the adjustment on May 13th, and James City County Board of Supervisors just approved it on May 25th.
So that won't, won't be the case in the future if there's a difference, if there's a delta between the sales tax because that, that may change. Is that correct?
That's correct. Starting next year, the sales tax will come directly to the school division, and so we won't be in a position with passover funds sitting at the city or the county.
Okay, thank you. And then also, I think our, thinking about the reduction in the sales tax, the 1% sales tax for education is based on the state? Sales tax across the whole state as opposed to local? Is that right? So I think...
That's correct. The education sales tax that we receive is based on sales across the entire state, and it's distributed based on school age population in each school division.
So that, that estimate may have been a reaction to what was going on in our local economy because of decline, of projected decline in tourism, as opposed to thinking about what was going on around the whole state. We may be over-projected in response to kind of our local economy as opposed to recognizing that this is a state...
Correct.
And then also just, I don't know if this is a question for Dr. Heron or Mr. Kelly, but you mentioned, we'll talk a little bit about the projectors and spending that amount on technology. But when, will we start talking at the next meeting about how, how to spend the, the rest of the $6 million or... Change that we're going to be voting later on today to change the budget by $7 million. We're identifying some tonight, but what about the rest? When will we talk about that publicly?
It, it will be at the next meeting. We do have an opportunity to purchase some things and extend the purchase orders beyond June 30th, which is the normal cutoff date, but that's a minimal amount of spending. The purchase that Mr. Landers will bring tonight does account for a portion of the money, and we are allowed to receive those items and have them installed, but it has to be by mid-August. It, it's extremely difficult to spend this amount of money in the best possible way in the timeline that we have, which is basically four weeks to the end of June.
Right. Which is why I asked why we're fighting out about this so late, because I suspect there was indicators earlier than, than now, but...
We're aware that the sales tax was coming in stronger, but the sales tax currently flows through the city and the county, and until they amended their budgets, we weren't in a position to amend ours. So the delay is, is not of our doing.
Right. Thank you. But just in, in interest of, I understand we have four weeks, but just in interest of transparency for people who might be interested in figuring out how we might spend that money, we'll be talking about that publicly at the next meeting. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Young?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Going along with what Ms. Cook just said, are we going during the next meeting, are we going to have more of an itemized presentation on the adjusted amounts in each of these categories?
The adjusted amounts in the expenditure categories?
Right. It says expenditure category instruction, and for example, that has $103,197.65, but there's an adjusted amount of about $4.5 million.
So the adjustment amounts were just based on the percentage allocation that our original adopted budget was based on. So I, I don't have that information with me, but for example, if the instruction budget was 73%, then the adjustment amount is also 73%. There's, there aren't specific items that make up the adjustment amounts.
Ms. Ewen took the total amount and distributed per our normal distribution of funds into each, each fund, basically.
Right. So these aren't replacement for things that we lost last year?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
Yeah, so the challenge, like Mrs. Cook alluded to, is that when you get $7 million three weeks before the end of the budget, you have, and having to try to spend it, it's a challenge. And so that's what Dr. Heron's going to bring back, bring to us at the next meeting, is how to spend those end-of-year monies appropriately.
Right. That's, I mean, that's what I'm basically asking. So, okay, thank you.
Where does that money go if we don't spend it?
It, it goes back to our funding partners.
Okey-dokey.
And so generally, each year, we do an end-of-year spending plan that's more formal for the use of funds that are left over, but this is more than the normal leftover funds.
Buy a lot.
Buy a lot.
For like $7 million, a lot.
About four to five.
Five million, probably, thank you.
Yeah.
Question?
Dr. Beers?
Have, have we had some discussion with the county supervisors about this? They, I mean, they know the figure, too. What is, any, we had any...
We haven't had discussion about the spending of our funds, no.
Right. Okay. But I mean, the money that's, if, when, if we don't spend it, it goes back to them, right?
That's correct, sir.
Yeah. That, I guess that's a part on...
But the, the timing, we, we have asked, one thing we have done, Dr. Beers, is we've asked permission to extend some purchase orders beyond June 30th, which is, used to be our normal, hasn't been for the last couple of years. And so we have had conversations about extending some of those purchase orders so we could use some of the funds.
If you, if you encumber before June 30, is that good enough, or do you actually have to spend it by June 30?
I think the, it's changed a little bit in recent years. I'll have Ms. Ewen just say the same thing again, really.
Yeah, in recent years, it's changed. So we, for the past couple of years, we've been operating where we have to have the funds spent by June 30th, but we worked with the county administration and are able to extend that this year as long as we have the funds encumbered by June 30th.
Well, the reason I, it's, this seems to, this comes up pretty regularly every year. And I, I'm just thinking if, I don't know who makes the rules, but I, I know in other organizations, once the money, public organization, you know, universities, that sort of thing, when, if they have encumbered before the end of the fiscal year, they're allowed to then pay, pay with that money after June 30. And I'm just wondering if we can do that, have done that, does the county do that themselves? It just seems like, given the times we're in, that this, that would be a fairly sensible request to make.
So we, we have requested permission to do that. For the last two years, that was not the way we were asked to, to complete the year, and we had to have things delivered by June 30th. So Ms. Ewen and I both reached out to the CFO and the county administrator and city to ask for the ability to do that this year because of the late amendment of the budget. So we do have permission to do that in the school year. There, there are limits on that because the budget for fiscal 50-21 has to be finalized at some point. So we're talking maybe six weeks or so roughly, that we'd want to have anything spent. So not everything can be delivered within that timeframe that we might want, but at least there are some things...
Yeah, that's the other, that's the other part of it is, even if you encumber, you know, the shortage of whatever it might be can, can have an impact. I just, it seems like some flexibility would really, would help us, would be helpful, and, and obviously help you in, in, I understand about, okay, once the budget, I, you know, I understand it, but I do, it's not unusual. You encumber things before the end of the fiscal year.
Jumping off from where Dr. Beers was, before you bring the end-of-year spending plan, that will at least have been, you discussed that with county finance folks to make sure that they kind of know where, where our head is and where their head is, right?
Absolutely.
Any other comments about the operating fund budget, which is on our agenda for tonight? Okay, 6.02, review revisions to 2021-2022 Student Code of Conduct.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Bouchard is here this evening to present the changes in the student code of conduct, and will make a very short presentation tonight of those changes.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. Each year, the Student Services Department brings recommended revisions to the student code of conduct for your consideration. Last year, the committee completed extensive work aligning our student code of conduct with the changes in reporting requirements that will become effective for the 2021-2022 school year. This year, the committee's focus was on minor adjustments to align with additions to those guidelines prior to full implementation next year. Committee members were representative of all levels and programs. The committee met beginning in February and continued through April. All revisions were reviewed to ensure alignment with state guidelines and policies. The revisions were also reviewed by our attorney. Student Code of Conduct is organized in three sections. The first section provides general information. We annually update the welcome letter, school year dates, board member names and roles, and the table of contents. The page numbers on the table of contents in the draft you have available will be finalized after all of the changes are accepted and prior to publishing. As you may recall from last year, the Virginia Department of Education... As you may recall from last year, the Virginia Department of Education is transitioning from the current accountability measures compiled in the annual Discipline, Crime, and Violence Report to a new state reporting requirement of Student Behavior and Administrative Response, or SBAR. This reporting process does become effective next school year. On page nine of the Student Code of Conduct, you will see, it's brand-new, it's been added to explain the five SBAR categories. Those five categories are: behaviors that impede academic progress with things like disruption or scholastic dishonesty; behaviors related to school operations such as defiance or unauthorized property; relationship behaviors such as defiance, disrespect, or inappropriate language; behaviors that present a safety concern such as false alarm or harassment; and behaviors that endanger self or others such as gang activity or hazing. Each category also has a letter coding. These coding references are used in the Rules section to identify for students and parents which category or categories apply to the rule. The second section of the Student Code of Conduct addresses student behavior. On page 10, minor revisions have been made to our Level 1 responses. For Level 1, wording has been adjusted to remove punitive language such as reprimand. Also, additional opportunities for response were also added such as conflict resolution. For Level 2, responses, Saturday School was deleted, and the tiered intervention wording was simplified. As you review the rules and corresponding levels of response, you will see changes to align with revised state guidelines in the areas listed on the screen. The state allows levels of response to be more stringent than the guideline recommendations, but not less stringent. Because our code of conduct is so well-organized, the changes are very minor. For example, our response level for attendance at the 6th through 12th grade level is currently Levels 1 and 2, but the state guideline is Levels 1 through 3. Since we cannot be less stringent, we must adjust our response to Levels 1 to 3. Please note that for sexual assault, the level for both pre-K through 5 and 6 through 12 should reflect Level 5 only. An updated page reflecting this has been made available to you. There are only two recommended revisions to the rules, which will also be presented as part of Policy JFC, Student Code of Conduct, under policy items later in the agenda. For verbal aggression, which is found on page 15, the committee recommends changing the word noisy to loud. And also, the transition this year to one-to-one devices for students necessitated revisions to the electronic devices rule that's found on page 16. Wording was added to acknowledge provision of division-level devices for all students. With this availability, the use of personal devices for instructional purposes was deleted. This revision was completed in close collaboration with our Instructional Technology Department to ensure alignment with our one-to-one program. The third section of the Student Code of Conduct provides relevant policy information. Three policies have been updated. The first two policies, JBCC and JFCE, have been previously revised, and policy wording has been updated to reflect the current policy. Policy JGCA, teacher removal of students from class, will be presented later in this evening's agenda under Proposed Policies. This concludes the revisions to our code of conduct for next year. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from board members? Ms. Hummel?
Thank you for your presentation. On this sheet of paper, I have a question about the sexual assault. I see that you have, which is really nice, it looks like you've got the policies that are referenced in red under everything but that one.
So sexual, we have it under sexual harassment is our Title IX policy. Sexual assault is actually a legal term.
Okay. So that's why that one has no corresponding policy?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
It's defined elsewhere in code, is that? Mr. Dowell?
Two questions, and I guess we can use sexual assault as that example. I see a phone next to that. What does that signify? That's a sexual assault. Can I speak to that?
The phone, the phone shows that we are required to notify police. Thank you for that question.
And I think we're going to talk about that later, but can you explain what that requirement looks like? Who's involved in that requirement to report?
The administrators would do the reporting. Typically, it's a school resource officer, or if it's an elementary school, they have a, they all have contact officers assigned, and they reach out to their contact officer. And if they have difficulty with that, they'll contact us.
So the chain of information begins with the teacher or responsible adult over that student, they report it to their administrator?
Correct. And they, they would do their due process, and then they would notify police.
Just two other questions for pre-K through 5, that's a Level 5 appropriately. What does Level 5 exactly mean, though? And I don't see Level 5, well, I do see it for hazing. What does Level 5 mean?
It's a recommendation for expulsion.
Expulsion. Thank you. And then, were there any areas that, I know you didn't, we're not required to, we're not allowed to be permitted to be less restrictive than the state mandates, did you find anywhere where we chose to be more restrictive?
Yes. One example would be under alcohol and drugs. If you turn to page 14, you will see for 6 through 12, it's a Level 2 through 5. The state is actually recommending 1 through 5, and we had a great deal of discussion about that and did not feel a Level 1 response would be appropriate for first grade 6 through 12. And so we chose to make it a 2.
Right. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions from board members? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Bouchard.
Appreciate it.
Six point zero three, review federal program grants 2021-2022. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Annually, we bring you an update on the grant applications for Title 1, 2, 3, and 4. And Ms. Ford, Director of Elementary Curriculum and Instruction, is here to present the information this evening. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. Tonight, I will present the proposed applications for the federal programs Title 1, 2, 3, and 4 grants for the 2021-22 school year. Title 1 grant provides personnel and resources that supplement academic programming in qualifying schools with the purpose of giving all children a fair, equitable, and high-quality education, and to close achievement gaps. Title 2 supports training, preparation, and recruitment of highly qualified teachers and leaders. Title 3 supports language instruction for students with limited English proficiency. And Title 4 provides funds for programs and activities to improve students' academic Over the past three years, grant funding has remained fairly stable. State funding is formula-based and includes several factors such as enrollment and free and reduced lunch statistics. Each year, the grants are written with level funding using the previous year's allocation as the basis for writing the grant. When the state releases the updated allocation amounts in the fall, we submit amendments to the grants to align them with the exact allocation amounts. In alignment with statewide educational reform efforts, Title 1 emphasizes funding for continuous and innovative programming that supplements our work on school improvement goals. It addresses the needs of all students through effective instructional programs and continued teacher development. WJCC prioritizes the use of funds for direct services to students at the seven Title 1 schools. Remaining grant funds supplement instructional resources, professional development, and family engagement or home resources for students. In WJCC, there are seven Title 1 schools. James River Elementary is a school-wide program which supports instruction for K-5 students. The remaining six schools are targeted assistance schools in which Title 1 programming serves students in kindergarten through third grade. WJCC Title 1 programming prioritizes direct services to students. Title 1 staff deliver supplemental early literacy instruction. The interventions include Level Literacy Intervention Systems, a small group model; Reading Recovery, a one-to-one model; and Successful Start, a kindergarten, small-group classroom model. All three methods emphasize direct teaching, ongoing progress monitoring, the use of formative assessments, and consistent feedback for student growth built around high-quality instructional materials. Last year, through the amendment process, WJCC added math intervention for K-3 students at the targeted assistance schools. Based on data analysis and instructional planning by grade-level teams and specialists using the Collaborative Teacher Teams, or CTT, process, students were identified for supplemental math instruction. The use of Title 1 funds to support early numeracy intervention for eligible students is included in the current year's grant application. The Title 1 team plans to expand the recruitment of math tutors and professional learning opportunities for those tutors to support our students as they address unfinished learning opportunities. Also at the core of Title 1 programming in WJCC is ongoing professional development for teachers of Title 1 students, with an emphasis on high level, on a high level of parental and family engagement, and providing home literacy and numeracy resources for eligible students. Title 2 funds support training, preparation, and recruitment of highly qualified teachers and leaders. To determine program funding, an internal process was developed in which curriculum coordinators and other division stakeholders submit program-related learning needs to the title grant committee. These needs are reviewed, analyzed for evidence-based practices, and their alignment to the strategic plan, and are evaluated for incorporation into the Title 2 grant. Title 2 supports the implementation and support for schools using collaborative teacher teams. The CTT process is a data-informed decision-making process focused on effective teaching and learning. A CTT cycle includes selecting a standard and setting a goal, identifying an instructional strategy, examining individual student work generated from common assessments, and the evaluation of teaching actions on student outcomes. Additionally, Title 2 funds address a portion of the salaries for our elementary literacy coordinator, secondary math coordinator, and science coordinator. It is our proposed plan to continue to utilize the Title 3 funds in a manner consistent with division initiatives and in alignment with the four pillars of our program to serve our multilingual learners: building programmatic capacity, building instructional capacity, building linguistic and academic capacity, and building family-community engagement capacity. Our elevation platform is an integrated information and instructional learning management system specifically designed to meet the needs of educators serving multilingual learners. The platform houses all of our demographic assessment and programmatic information for our multilingual learners and provides classroom teachers with content-specific, language-focused resources that can be used in the general education classroom. The platform also supports sheltered instruction within the PSYOP model. Imagine Learning Platform is a computer-based suite of individualized adaptive instructional experiences designed to enrich the language acquisition of Ls that also includes extensive offline intervention tools and materials to facilitate teacher-led, highly-targeted small-group instruction. A key focus for the coming school year is to provide increased opportunities for professional learning about serving multilingual learners for all educators in WJCC. Under the umbrella of providing systems of support for our multilingual learners, educators will have a variety of course modules from which to choose to broaden their understanding of and skill set for effectively providing instruction for our multilingual learners. We also intend to utilize funds to support our expanded Language Instruction Summer enrichment program, as well as our Multilingual Learner Parent Resource Center and family engagement initiatives. Title 4 funds are generally used for increasing technology and enhancing instruction for students through professional development opportunities for teachers. The Virginia Department of Education offers the opportunity to transfer Title 4 funds into other grant areas. Our team has opted to transfer the funds to Title 3 to increase technology, enhance instruction, and support family engagement specifically for our growing population of multilingual learners. We anticipate receiving Title 4 funds for the coming year and intend to use the allocation to maintain our digital instructional resources, professional learning opportunities, and support a halftime position for our family and community engagement coordinator. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have at this time.
Questions, comments from board members? Mr. Dowell?
You may have answered this. I noticed that the grant funding looks like it stays flat through 2022. Is that just a projection? Is that what you know to be true?
Grant coordinators at the state level recommend that grants are written with level funding at this time. An initial allocation has been released for each grant. However, those amounts are typically adjusted through the summer, and so they do recommend that we write our grants with level funding based on last year's allocation, and then we will make adjustments in the fall when the final allocations are released, which is typically in September.
Then what portion, I understand that there's going to be money moved from Title 4 to Title 3, but is that all of the $106,000? Don't you anticipate doing that?
Yes, sir. Yes. The entire amount is moved to the title through grant, through a transferability process.
Thank you.
Dr. Beers?
Yeah, is the, are teachers involved in the early stages of deciding what kinds of professional development they want, or is there, maybe it's a combination, professional development that goes along with a new program approach? But are there other, are there other areas where they make suggestions, you know, this would be really helpful if I knew more about this or more about that? Or how do you, how do you, how do you decide how you work that?
Absolutely. Well, first and foremost, we are obligated to continue the continuing education requirements for Reading Recovery and Successful Start, which are ongoing and annual each year. So that's a portion of how we allocate our professional development funds. Our building leaders and Title 1 teams are very involved in decision-making for their individual schools' allocations, and we are very interested in hearing how they want to continue to learn to serve the students of their individual communities. So yes, they do have a voice in that process. Absolutely.
Thanks.
Any other comments from board members? Questions?
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Always good to get $2 million wherever you can.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Six point zero four, review authorization for VHSL memberships for the 2021-2022 school year. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Annually, we authorize VHSL memberships, and Dr. Worley is here to present this item tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. Tonight, I'm presenting information on our annual membership application fee that allows WJCC student athletes to participate in high school varsity athletics through the Virginia High School League, or the VHSL. The VHSL requires the annual membership fee plus an additional fee to obtain catastrophic insurance for athletes through the league. There are a couple of items to bring that I would like to highlight for you this evening about the three high school applications. Number one, due to the impact of COVID-19, you will notice the application looks a little different this year. There are several components to the annual fee. First, each school pays a membership fee of $800, plus $35 for each varsity activity participated in the previous school year. This means we will pay $35 for each sport we participated in school year 2021. We did not participate in winter sports during 2021, so those activities are not checked on this year's application. Additionally, an insurance formula is used to calculate the fee per school. The league directs us to use the previous year's roster to provide an estimated number of athletes by sport. The fee is The fee is $5.50 per student. Due to COVID, the league directed schools to use the most recent rosters to project our participation numbers for insurance purposes. Our current application uses rosters from the 2021 school year for fall and spring sports and rosters from the 2019-20 school year for winter sports to estimate our needs for 2122. The individual applications for each school are attached to the agenda item. And this year, the total cost for the VHSL membership fee is $13,150.50 for all three schools. I'm happy to answer any questions for you at this time.
Ms. Owenby?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In fact, really, so what is the impact of not checking off the winter sports that we didn't participate in this year?
How they, it's really not an impact. They're directing us to come, we are charged, it's like a year off every year. If you read the application fee, you're charged $35 for what you participated in the year before. So next year, we'll check every sport that we participated in. It's like a year late.
So does it negatively impact our students in any way?
No, it does not.
Just want to make that clear for the listening public. And then, and I didn't look at all three of these together. So can you explain to me the difference, the dollar difference between the three schools?
So for Jamestown, for example, there are 22 activities and 571 athletes, which comes up to $4,710.50. Lafayette has 20 activities and 510 athletes, $4,305. And Warhill has 20 activities with 470 athletes for $4,085.
Thank you, Dr. Worley.
Ms. Hummel?
Every year, I look at this and I'm, so what are the two? I'm trying to go back and forth. That Jamestown has two extra sponsored activities that Lafayette and Warhill don't?
So it changes a little bit each year. This year, for instance, the differences on the spreadsheet for the three schools. Lafayette and Jamestown had girls golf and Warhill did not. That does not mean girls did not participate. The explanation for that is the VHSL offers a girls tournament. And sometimes they'll have a girls team compete in the girls tournament. And sometimes they'll just participate golf in general.
Individuals, right.
Individually. And so there's also debate which ran at Lafayette and Jamestown this year. And then...
Like Warhill had debate.
Yes. And then the, then Jamestown also started one of the new activities this year, which was Film Festival, which is new. So typically, where we've seen the change has been in the student activity list, which is Debate, Film, Forensics, Scholastic Bowl, Student Media, which is the Yearbook, and Theater Festival. But we've really seen a push for getting schools involved in all of those activities. And in fact, two of the ADs told me today that they do have coaches for two of the things that were not sponsored at one of the schools. So we hope to get schools involved in all of those.
I do remember that it's some of the, I hate to say this, but some of the more obscure categories are what sometimes put us over, in a positive way, for VHS.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Just wanted to throw that out there for all those forensics people and Film Festival people out there. Yay! And then have you seen any, or do you think esports is going to show up?
Yes. Yes. We do have esports. We have the computers, we have coaches, and that is something our schools were interested in. So all three schools were participating in esports.
But is that, that's not, that's not on here?
Yeah, it's not on the application, but we do have students participating in esports.
And is it not VHSL?
It is.
Okay.
It is, but it's not on their application.
Okay, okay.
I forgot to update the application, I guess.
Did they not have it last year?
They did. That was one of the things that we, that we were working on if the kids were interested in it. I don't know if they actually competed. I will follow up on that. I did not hear that they did not. We did support that. They, all three schools have a coach. So I'll check on that one for you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Dr. Worley. Could we get, because of the impact of COVID, maybe a little bit of a trend line on each of the, so the number of athletes and the number of activities across, for all three high schools, two school years ago, last year, last school year and this year? Does that make any sense?
Like three years of?
Yeah, yeah. So we could see if there's... And then also, I think, given what we know about the importance of participating in these activities and the impact that that has on grades and student, you know, mental health, I'm concerned at the variety that we see in the numbers. You know, we have one class three school that has more athletes than a class, or more participants, I guess it's not athletics, than a class four school. So, I mean, I think it stands to reason that the two class four schools that we have should have more athletes than the class three. And so that just concerns me. And I hope that with our change next year to a full-time person at central office that will work with you to oversee that, that somehow we can get more kids engaged because we know it leads to better things.
Any other questions, comments from board members?
I guess it doesn't make sense that you pay for what you participated in last year so that this, that way, this year, if you have a, if you have an interest in robotics, for instance, that you could have a robotics team in, and then you pay next year for having one the previous year.
Right.
I get that logic. Any other? Thank you, Dr. Worley.
You're welcome. Thank you.
6.05, review the updated five-year local plan for the education of the gifted. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Colorado has spent a considerable amount of time since taking her new position as coordinator of the gifted services to develop a new five-year local gifted plan. And she's going to present some of the details of this tonight for your information. Dr. Colorado?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the school board, and Dr. Heron. I'm Ann Colorado, coordinator for Gifted Education for WJCC. On behalf of the Gifted Department and the internal and external local plan work groups, I'm excited to share with you our proposed update of our local plan for the education of the gifted. The state of Virginia requires that every division submit an updated gifted local plan every five years. This plan is the blueprint for how things are done for gifted students in WJCC. However, it is also a living document, and addendums can be done at any time during our five-year cycles with school board approval. We are pleased to say that Mrs. Sandra Young was a part of our External Stakeholder Local Plan Work Group. We deeply thank her for being a part of our update process. We began our official local plan development process in November 2020, though the research phase started a year before that. Everything written in this plan is based on the national standards for gifted education, best practices from the field of gifted education, interviews, discussions, and Zoom meetings with other Virginia gifted coordinators and state leaders from departments such as Math, Gifted, and Ed Equity Virginia, state guidelines and regulations for gifted programs, our WJCC strategic plan, and input from many stakeholders. Working with stakeholders was a special part of our local plan development process. To inform our writing on the plan, we created internal and external local plan work groups comprised of roughly 40 stakeholders representing central office, all 16 schools, and several community organizations such as the NAACP, the Center for Gifted Education at William &amp; Mary, and Thomas Nelson Community College. Then we collected survey data from roughly 160 other stakeholders, including 95 gifted students. The draft plan underwent eight revisions in order to best incorporate the constructive feedback we received. We used four mindsets when crafting our proposed plan. A mindset of talent development. This philosophy aims to match all students to appropriate, challenging academic pathways by noticing and nurturing their academic talents and strength areas. A mindset of equity. We know that giftedness occurs in all populations and all walks of life. We must be more inclusive in our gifted identification practices and work to create multiple pathways to our most rigorous courses. Ultimately, our equity work will help all students in our division access the level of education that matches their needs. A mindset of impact and outcomes. We need to make measurable goals for all facets of our gifted program, as well as specific gifted student goals that have measurable student outcomes at different grade-level benchmarks. And finally, we used a mindset of alignment with the division's strategic plan. The strategic plan is the guiding document for all we do in WJCC. So our proposed local plan must be aligned with the six goals of the strategic plan. We will describe these six primary areas of the local plan to you in a little more depth. For the definition and philosophy area, we use the proposed state gifted definition for general intellectual aptitude that you see on the screen, combined with a talent development program model and philosophy. The other part of this definition on the screen describes several characteristics that gifted students demonstrate or have the potential to demonstrate beyond their age-level peers, such as advanced thinking and reasoning, persistent intellectual curiosity, exceptional problem-solving, rapid acquisition and mastery of facts, concepts, and principles, or creative and imaginative expression across a broad range of intellectual disciplines. This definition and program model is more inclusive because it allows for giftedness and potential giftedness to be expressed in multiple ways and in multiple academic areas. For the program goals and objectives area, we've aligned all six local plan goal statements and objectives, as seen in the list on this slide, to the WJCC strategic plan. We've also created goal planning documents that describe the implementation steps necessary to achieve each goal. These planning documents will serve as our department's roadmap over the course of the next five years. In addition, we created specific gifted student goals stating what gifted students should know and be able to do as an outcome of being in the WJCC gifted program. The specific gifted student goals are aligned to the Virginia Department of Education's five Cs of creative thinking, critical thinking, collaboration, communication, and citizenship. For the gifted identification process section, we implemented more robust, more robust, universal screening procedures on all universally-collected data in grades K through 12. We also expanded the types of data we will collect and the criteria we can use for gifted identification. All of these changes reflect more inclusive practices for identifying gifted students from all backgrounds. For the area of program of differentiated curriculum and instruction, we expanded our use of the Cluster Group Resource Model as our main service model, K through 12. At the elementary level, the enhanced use of this model actually increases services for our gifted students by creating a structure that allows for daily differentiation in students' classes, which is a state requirement. By having a talent development philosophy, we can expand the role of the gifted and talent development teacher to support all teachers. Thus, gifted personnel can leverage the MTSS, or multi-tiered system of supports and extensions for academics, to help teachers provide appropriate curriculum and instruction for our identified gifted students, as well as to all students. Lastly, we created a talent development program in K through 2. Through this program, all K-2 students will learn selected thinking routines, which will be embedded in grade-level content. For the personal and professional development section, we will institute basic-level, state-required, annual professional development for all instructional staff. This training will ensure that every teacher has basic knowledge of how to address the advanced learning needs of any of their students in any content area, which learning characteristics could indicate giftedness, and how the WJCC gifted and talent development processes work. We will also offer many optional job-embedded professional development opportunities for gifted teaching strategies as well. Finally, we propose to expand the role of the gifted and talent development teacher. The expanded role would entail five areas: deeper levels of data screening and monitoring, collaboration with all teachers through co-teaching, co-planning, and teacher training, curriculum writing, gifted program administration, and direct teaching responsibilities. In sum, this proposed local plan represents extensive research into gifted education best practices, our state regulations for gifted, our WJCC strategic plan, a mindset for equity and talent development, and the collective work and ideas of roughly 200 stakeholders over the past year and a half. This proposed plan sets forth a stronger gifted program that will benefit the WJCC community in three definitive ways. First, by nurturing talent development for all students in order to match them to appropriately rigorous academic paths. Second, by creating more robust structures for differentiated curriculum and instruction for our gifted and potentially gifted students to challenge them in their academic strength areas. And third, by providing resources and support for all teachers so they can deliver appropriate academic challenge to their students who need it. On behalf of the Gifted Department and the internal and external local plan work groups, we offer our proposed plan to you with utmost faith in it and excitement for it. At this point, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Colorado. Ms. Owenby?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Dr. Colorado, for your presentation. I'm so pleased that there's a focus on equity and identifying as many students as possible who maybe were, you know, traditionally underrepresented. Can you give some specific strategies that have changed that will help us become more inclusive?
Yes, I definitely can. What we propose to do, one of the things we propose to do is to really enhance our universal screening process so that our gifted and talent development teachers are working with their admin and grade-level teams, K-12, to look at all of that data that we collect on every student and look for thresholds of performance that might indicate potential strength areas. And then provide teachers with differentiation activities and ideas so that the students can start getting challenged in the classroom in more specific ways than maybe they have been before. So we can try to collect some work product from them and use that as part of our screening process as well. We also expanded our criteria to focus on, or to add in extenuating circumstances to consider other reasons why students' data might not show exactly the strength areas that they have, and also alternative data. When we have a preponderance of other data that could support a gifted or potentially gifted identification, we can consider that and use that for provisional placement as well. One of the biggest ways I think we're going to be able to boost our equity in our program is by having our gifted resource teachers work with teams of teachers through collaborative planning and pushing into the classroom, which is a big focus of this K-2 talent development program. So the gifted resource teacher has eyes on all the kids over the course of time, gets to know the students, and gets to really target the type of differentiation that teachers can provide to those students to really nurture that talent so they emerge and we can find them gifted.
Thank you. And just one additional question. So how does the idea of twice-gifted work in our division? If a student has an identified disability and has an IEP, but also might be gifted in other areas, do parents have to choose one service or the other? Can they have both?
That's a great question. Twice exceptional is something that we are also going to be working on this summer to create some modules and resources for teachers when this comes up. This is certainly not a pick-or-choose situation. When we have a student who is twice exceptional, the gifted resource teacher becomes a part of the student's IEP team. And also even before that, is invited to child studies when we suspect something like that. And we'll be working with school psychologists and school social workers so they know signs to look for when they're doing their different testing. So whenever we suspect a twice exceptional student, the gifted resource teacher can be a part of creating eligibility and all the creation of the IEP documents.
That's exciting. Thank you, Dr. Colorado.
You're welcome.
Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Dr. Colorado.
Thank you, Dr. Colorado, for your thorough presentation. I'm very excited about it. Like Ms. Owenby, I too am very interested in the equity lens here, and I have sort of two questions. The first has to do with the identification processes that you were talking about. If a child is provisionally identified and offered services, does the school provide any additional support services to them to help them connect in ways that maybe some of the other kids who are in, they have those natural supports at home? Could you talk about that for just a second?
Yes, ma'am, definitely. And that is something that we talked about with our stakeholder groups as well that came up from our stakeholders. And we're going to be working on creating scaffolding training for teachers. So scaffolding is a process where we provide supports in the classroom for curriculum, also possibly mentoring that can go with that so that we can help the student if there are any kind of gaps in skills or just other ways to approach the curriculum so that teachers can see that there's a potential in this child but they just might need to get to it in a different way. So yes, we will be addressing scaffolding and working with teachers so they know how to do that. We also plan a lot more outreach with parents and the community so that kind of we're all on the same page. We all know, we're all talent scouts. That's kind of the philosophy with talent development. And so when parents know more, they can support their children more. And I haven't ever met a parent who doesn't want to know more about how to help their child. So it could be a real win-win when we start doing this next year.
And then my second question also is with an equity lens but a little less tactical. Stepping back, and if you don't know the answer to this, that's fine. Generally speaking, what percentage of the population is academically gifted? Do you happen to know that?
I do actually happen to know that from all this research we did for the plan. Traditional straight out gifted in the general population is 3% to 5%. That's just general. School gifted is kind of what we call it according to the National Association for Gifted Children is roughly 10%. In the state of Virginia, it's about 11% when you look at all the divisions and what they've identified.
And then where are we on that? Are we about 11%?
We're a little higher than that as of last year's numbers. So we're always kind of a year behind, lagging with our data because our annual reporting isn't due till July 31st. So we're around 16%.
Wow, so we're providing gifted services to 16% of our population, K-12?
Yes.
Okay, and I'll ask that question in a second. So given that giftedness is not driven by socioeconomic status or by race in any given population, you can expect, you know, 10% or 11% to be gifted. Is that a fair statement?
That's a general statement on national data.
Okay.
Yeah.
So are we holding ourselves accountable through those lenses, whether we're looking at socioeconomic, you know, free and reduced lunch numbers or race? Are we looking at that and seeing where our gaps are and seeing if we can?
We've really started to do that, but the state is going, they're coming out with new drivers for what to look for and how to find that data. So we're anticipating this summer, we're going to get more direction from the state on how they want us to monitor that and the way they want us to pull data. So I know that's coming, and we'll be able to monitor that a lot more closely.
And then back to our 16%, what counts as providing gifted services to someone who's ninth through 12th grade? Like, is that just AP classes? Is that a gifted service? Or what is categorized as gifted services?
Advanced classes with the differentiation and cluster grouping. So usually those students, we make sure they're grouped together, at least, you know, eight to 10 kids in a gifted, in a class so they can get the differentiated services. But it's very curriculum-driven as the kids get into high school, and that's what we see across the state. The classes that students are really strong in, those are the ones they end up selecting. So they're, the kids are very much drivers of where they want to take their talent areas. And so we just provide the training to the teachers to do the kinds of strategies in those classes that can really elicit their gifted thinking.
So in elementary school, it's sort of a pullout situation, but as they go through middle and high school, if a child is taking AP English, for instance, we're counting that as a gifted service?
It is counted as a gifted service for the state, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Beers?
Yeah, thanks so much for that really detailed presentation. I just have a couple of questions. First of all, it sounds like the emphasis in the program is primarily academic. You refer to the Center for Gifted Ed over at William &amp; Mary, and that has traditionally been very much oriented towards academic prowess and various subject areas. One of the questions I have is, and it sounds quite structured. I happen to know from my own research that there are quite a few kids who are very gifted or talented who don't fit the mold of a structured, highly structured kind of program. So the question for that, about that is, how do you, how do you deal with the identification of those kids? And what do you do? Because they are out there, and often, these students are actually the ones who need the most support because of, you know, other issues that they're dealing with as well. So I'm curious about that, and then I have another question after that.
Sure. So the state allows divisions to identify students gifted in academics, in the arts, or in CTE? Is that what you're getting at?
Well, no. Yeah, I am going to ask about the arts, but no, what I'm asking about is, how do you take a square peg and fit them into a round hole if that's the nature of that particular student?
So I think part of the answer to that will be with the teacher training piece that we started with this past year and will continue next year in a deeper fashion. So teachers can see all the different ways and learn about all the different characteristics of a student. Like you said, it's not always this cookie cutter, teacher pleaser type of characteristics that we see. There are other characteristics. And when we notice them, how can we nurture them and help direct the student to apply those characteristics into their strength areas?
And it may mean that the actual structure or the kind of approach that you take with that particular student could be quite different.
Exactly.
Than the one that is, you know, that's more acceptable to other students as well. Other question I had, and it really comes down to, how is talent identified? And you mentioned the arts. I am particularly interested in that because we know there are students who are talented in music, or art, or writing. How, and they're not necessarily going to be academically superior, or that's not, that's not their talent, that's not really where their orientation goes. How do you identify those students?
Exactly. In the field of talent development, every area can have a talent. So any area you can think of can have a talent. So what we would like to do is help teachers find students and help them discover, find their strength areas, discover their strength areas. Like you said, it might not necessarily be reading, math, you know, science. It might not be one of those core academic subjects. But knowing what children, helping children learn what they like and what they're good at will help them take those skills and apply them into any area that works for that, but also to see the other areas where that can work.
So if you have a fourth grader, and that student has been developing an interest, an awareness, and a talent in art, for example, you're not going to, are we going to have art classes for that? What are you going to, I guess, what are you going to do with that student? How are you going to expand or develop that particular talent in a, you know, a setting that's more academically oriented?
Well, in a very simple way, at that young age, we can direct the student to use that artistic talent in whatever subject areas the student is learning about. But as they get older, then we can direct them into the classes that we are able to offer that can help them hone and push that talent further. Now, that is one thing you might have noticed as one of our goals. We did have several stakeholders who asked if we could start exploring the idea of having another kind of gifted program in addition to what we have. So that is something that we put in as an objective for us during this next five years to really learn more about possible gifted programs for CTE and the arts and explore if they're even feasible for us to be able to sustain programs like that.
The reason I bring that up is, you know, we are in a community where the academic performance and how well you do as a student is very, it's very important to a large segment of our population. And I haven't sensed quite as much of that in the arts, but that may be because I'm just not aware of that. But I know in other school divisions, generally larger ones, there are, they start encouraging and developing, and I'm going to call them talent. You may be a gifted artist, but first you have to, you've got to, you have to demonstrate talent in that area. And I'm just, I think it's important, and I think you're on the right track when you say there might be, you know, we maybe need to identify another area, or it could be, okay, these are the gifted academic kids, we have the talented ones over here. Now, you can also have students that have both, can't you? Who excel in academics and also have a real propensity for, you know, for drawing or painting or whatever the art form might be. What I, I guess what I think is really important is not to lose sight of the fact that, I know the academic stuff's really important, but if you encourage a student in music, art, or in writing, those are talents that can last forever. They go on forever. In other words, it provides an avenue for students as they, you know, as they get older, as they graduate, so that it isn't entirely academically oriented. But that's, you know, it's not that I have a bias, I just, I'm always looking for that because I don't think, in the United States anyway, compared to other countries, I don't think we give the arts just, they're just due.
I definitely think we can integrate the strength areas that we notice in our children into...
You've got to find, you've got to see them first.
Right.
That's the other part, isn't it?
Right.
We have to know who those kids are. Okay.
Any other comments from board members? The only question I have, I saw that you had mandatory professional development for our teachers, is that the way it is today, too?
We started that this year. The state does require that every teacher who teaches a gifted child have training. And so we started asynchronous one-hour modules of training to cover all of the state requirements. And so, yes, it's very important though because it just makes a very informed staff when all of our teachers have that training so they can all be talent scouts as well.
Yeah, I hear that. The concern I have with professional development is sometimes I think we PD our teachers into a different profession or retirement because we do a lot of, everybody has, you know, we've got to do professional development for that and professional development for this, and pretty soon our teachers are doing nothing but professional development and not getting, not getting in the classroom. So it's just, I get concerned about that when we have all the different ways we can train our teachers, but it just adds more burden to our teachers, I think, on occasion.
We do try to be very cognizant of that, and I will say that all of the professional development is aligned, so we're not overtaxing them. So we'll be very careful with that.
I understand. I understand. Any other comments or questions from board members? Thank you, Dr. Colorado.
Thank you.
6.06, review award of contracts to mobile lease modular space for a total of nine temporary mobile equipment classroom trailers at seven elementary schools.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This evening, Mr. Snipes is going to introduce three different items. The first of these is the lease agreement for our trailers. Mr. Snipes, if you start with that one, please.
Good evening, Chairman Kelly, School Board members, and Dr. Heron. As stated tonight's proposal, general item for your information and discussion is a review of award of contracts to mobile lease modular space for nine temporary mobile education trailers at seven schools. Those schools are Stonehouse, Norwich, J. Blaine Blatton, D.J. Montague, Clara Bird Baker, Laurel Lane, and James River Elementary School. Each middle, each mobile classroom trailer will be 28 by 60, containing two classrooms, and each classroom will be equipped with a restroom. However, the trailer at Norwich will be 24 by 60 to account for site considerations, but will otherwise be configured the same as the other classroom trailers. The James City County Board of Supervisors approved the special use permits for Clara Bird Baker, J. Blaine Blatton, D.J. Montague, Laurel Lane, Norwich, Stonehouse, and James River at their May 11th and April 13th meetings, respectively. Temporary classroom trailers and installation will be provided under annual contract serviced by Mobile Lease Modular Services, Modular Space, under KPN contract number 20190201-A. We anticipate these temporary trailers to be in use through the 2024, 2025 school year. Funding for these trailers in FY '22 and FY '23 funding is allocated through the CARES Act and ESER Fund and the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act. And FY '24 funding will be allocated within the American Rescue Plan Act, and FY '25 and '26 funding will be included in the operating budget. Superintendent recommends the school board review the project information and be prepared to vote at the June 15, 2021 meeting.
Any questions, comments from the school board members on this? Ms. Young?
Yes, the only thing is, I'm looking at site placement. What were some of the criteria for placing? Was it access to plumbing, you know, water, sewage?
You're exactly right. That is one, that was one of the criteria, one of the main criteria because we wanted restrooms in those, in those classrooms.
I'm looking at security, for example. It's a concern of this board, and like when I'm looking at J. Blaine Blatton, that trailer looks like it's going to be quite a distance from the building.
Yes, ma'am. That was based on the fact that the, that's where the water is coming into the school, and you couldn't get any closer. But we are looking at fencing, as well as cameras, as well as other security measures.
Some of these are where trailers have been in the past.
Correct.
Just looking at some of the site locations is where they are.
And some of these, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So in some of these places, there's already pads there for them?
Some locations, yes. For example, we're having two additional, additional trailer at Stonehouse, so there are already pads there.
And the reason why we're through the 24, 25 is because that's the length of the term of the lease?
The lease, like, eight months.
Got you.
And for some of these, for example, A, B, is it, I'm sure it's up to the, what grade actually goes in there, or whether it's a grade at all and isn't like a center classroom?
The principal will make that decision based on enrollment and where the trailer is situated and which grade level is close to that area depending on need. So it'll be very much based on the schedule for the school. It'll be different in every single building.
I do, I do feel for, it's pouring down rain, you know, it's, this is, I just want to get on my soapbox once that, that we...
You know, it's, this is, I just want to get on my soapbox once that, that we need to be as a community and with our funding partners, are forward-thinking with our space for elementary schools. That we're not, we're not looking at four to five years of this situation and then going beyond that where it, this really isn't a good environment for our, it's the best that we can do since we don't have the space as we weren't allowed to build and the, it's been removed even from the five-year plan for a 10th elementary. So it just, I'm going to get on, I'll get off my soapbox, but I'm just saying this is not ideal by any stretch of the imagination. I...
Comments from, any other comments from board members? Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to echo what Ms. Hummel and Mrs. Young said. And I, I support these trailers and I have voted in support of funding them, but if we had a 10th elementary school, we would not need these. And I just want to be super clear about that and say that publicly so that people who are listening understand that. And it's, it's a necessary evil for us to do this, but I regret that we are put in a position where this is necessary and I wish we didn't have to.
Any comments? Uh, that takes us to six point zero seven, review award of contract for invitation for bid 2115314, site work for temporary classroom trailers at Norwich, Blatton, and Stonehouse. Dr. Heron?
To Mr. Snipes.
Tonight, we have two additional agenda items that will support the previously proposed agenda items. The agenda item six point zero seven, as stated, is a review of award of contract for IFB number 21-15314, which is site work for temporary classroom trailers at JB Blatton, Norwich, and Stonehouse. The James City County Board of Supervisors approved the special use permit for Blatton, Norwich, and Stonehouse at their May 11th meeting. The work under this project consists of site work for installations of the trailers of the aforementioned sites. The work will include things like temporary fencing, deck, steps, and concrete sidewalks, and electrical connections, and fire alarm connections. An invitation for bid was issued on May 8th, 2020, with a due date of today, June 1st, 2020. This is a placeholder agenda item, and at the time this was prepared, the bid opening process had not been conducted. However, the detailed vendor and bid award information will be included on the June 15th agenda item. Funds are allocated within the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act, and the superintendent recommends that the board review this project information and be prepared to vote at the June 15th, 2021 school board meeting.
Before we discuss, why did we separate six oh seven and six oh eight? Yeah, the next one is site work for the other trailers.
Right.
I think the purpose behind that was to spread the workload. If it was all going, a contract was awarded to one firm, it wouldn't get done perhaps in the same amount of time. And so to try to get additional bidders in the ring for both contracts, they were put as two separate bids.
Okay, thank you. Questions from board members? So Marcellus, which, which schools already have pads for the trailers?
DJ Montague.
Right.
And Clara Bird Baker. Norwich has a pad, but it's not being situated on the previous site. We had to... ...site.
Okay. Okay. So, uh, you gonna say the same thing about six point oh eight?
I was going to say the same thing about six point zero eight in conjunction with the previously agenda item. The review award of contract for invitation bid number 2115315, which is the site work for temporary classroom trailers at Clara Bird Baker, DJ Montague, Laurel Lane, and James River. Again, this, Board of Supervisors approved the special use permits at their April 13th and May 11th meetings respectively. The work under the project will include this, same site work for the installation of trailers at the aforementioned schools, like I said, for sidewalks, as well as concrete deck steps, fire alarms, grading. An invitation was, for bid, was issued on May 8th, 2021, with a due date of June 2nd, 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Snipes. Mr. Dowell?
It's a, maybe a pithy type of question, but what type of fence are we talking about? We're not talking chain link, I'm sure.
No, this is just, the site work will just include that orange fencing that will keep sediment erosion and erosion measures. That's what the site work will.
A security-type fencing, I'm asking, though. What, what type of fencing are we looking at to do?
We, we will, we will look at all types right now.
Not sure yet?
Yeah.
Okay. Height, we're not sure yet?
No.
Okay.
We'll send out.
And as we do that, thinking about what Ms. Hummel has, has mentioned, especially around rain and, and other types of inclement weather, can we also, I don't know if the board would be amenable to this, but also look at some sort of walkway structure where there's a, you know, an awning of type that leads from the building to the, to the class?
We will look into that. However, that may require another special use permit for buildings.
Sure.
And considerable expense as well to build a permanent structure of that nature that we haven't accounted for at this moment in time.
Amount of time we've waited for bus, bus canopies over the years, I can't imagine, right? I mean, but, and the fencing at, at Berkeley was chain link, right? I mean, I think, I was expecting chain link for any security. Is that a fair expectation?
I would say we would need to discuss that with senior leadership first because, as, if you remember Laurel Lane, we put up a whole different type of fencing than what we did at other places. So we want to make it unanimous.
But it was chain link at Berkeley, right?
At one time, yes.
If I may, both these items are, the bids are coming in on June 2nd and June 3rd. Because of the timing and because of the schedule to get the trailers completed before the board votes on the, the cost associated with, with this, with the final bids at the next meeting, having been given authority by you, I will be asking for the work to start immediately once we've reviewed and chosen the, and awarded the bids with purchasing. So I just wanted to make you aware of that. It'll come to you at the next meeting, but we will have moved ahead in this interim period. But we wanted to bring the bids tonight so you'd see that we were right in the middle of that process.
So when we take action on this at our next meeting, it will be affirming your action, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Because we have a date to meet.
We have a deadline, and if we, once we look at the bids and award the bid through purchasing, we would like to get them started immediately. And that'll probably happen next week, Mr. Snipes. Is that correct?
Yes, it would happen.
And so we could be starting literally two days before or a day before the board officially approves the amount. It'll be almost in sequence, but just slightly outside. So thank you for, for that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Snipes. Review the Enhanced Health Insurance Credit Resolution. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Baker's going to present this item this evening about people who have retired from our system. Mr. Baker?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Heron. Tonight for review is the Enhanced Insurance Credit Resolution from VRS that allows eligible WJCC retirees who are not teachers to receive an Enhanced Health Insurance Credit effective July 1st, 2021. The Health Insurance Credit is a benefit designed to assist retirement-eligible employees who retire with at least 15 years of VRS service credit with the cost of health insurance coverage. WJCC can now elect to increase the credit for eligible employees in certain positions to include bus drivers, bus aides, custodians, and employees in various operation trades. The current rate for these retirees is a monthly stipend of $1.50 per year of credit service. The resolution adds an additional $1 per year for a total credit of $2.50 per year of service. Other VRS-eligible employees in the professional category receive $4 per year of credit service as set by the General Assembly. If approved, the Health Insurance Credit Resolution will assist employees in these job positions to pay for their health insurance premiums upon retirement. So to give you an example, if a bus driver or a bus aide or custodian retire with at least 15 years of service credit, VRS gives a credit of $1.50 per month for each year of service to go towards health insurance. So a 15-year, an employee with 15 years of, of service times $1.50 per month is a credit of $22.50 per month or $270 a year is what currently bus aides, custodians, and bus drivers receive. With the resolution, the change would be from $1.50 a month for each year of service to $2.50 for each year of service. So that example would be 15 years of service times $2.50 per month or $37.50 a month credit or $450 a year credit for their health insurance.
Can you run those same numbers again with the professional staff that you talked about?
Yes, sir. If a teacher with at least 15 years of service receives the credit of $4 a month for each year of service and goes towards their health insurance, that teacher would be 15 years of service times $4 a month or $60 per month health insurance credit or $720 a year.
Okay. The first time you ran through it, I thought, I thought I heard $4 per year and I was just...
No, 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 I apologize. So, and the, and the teacher one is set by the General Assembly.
Sure.
It, it helps our retirees.
Sure. Any discussion, thoughts, comments? Ms. Cook?
Just, Mr. Baker, so those, that credit towards insurance goes to any insurance? Is it before Medicare kicks in or Medigap premiums after Medicare kicks in? Can you help me understand where that?
It's for, for any insurance, yeah. They can use it up for their insurance as a retiree for, for Medicare.
Before, so before age 65 and then also at?
If they're a retiree.
Past age 65?
Yes, ma'am. They can still use it too.
For the rest of their life, they can use it? And they just get a check?
It's in their retirement. It's, it's part of their, part of their pension. It's a credit that goes into their pension, into their, into their VRS credit.
Okay. Forgive my lack of understanding. So then it's insurance, that credit comes through insurance they buy through VRS?
And it goes into your VRS, into their, to their pension. So they, they turn in, hey, here's the amount of insurance I'm buying. And so then they'll, they'll get a credit, they'll give them extra money into their pension.
So they get money?
Yes, ma'am.
And they can buy any insurance?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments, thoughts?
Is this something that comes out of our budget, this resolution?
Yes, ma'am. It would be approximately, I think, about $8,000 for the year.
More. So what are we currently paying total for that? It would be $8,000 more per year, but what's the line item now?
I'd have to get that now. I don't have it.
That would be useful.
Okay. I apologize. I didn't get that before.
Because I, I mean, I think having a pension is wonderful. Not very many people have pensions anymore, so I think that's wonderful. So I just, this is adding, adding another, another benefit for people who are no longer employed. But it's a thank you, I guess, for people who were here for 15 years. But it's $8,000. I just, I just want to, like, be the big expense and then see where else that money could be used.
So we already do it for retired teachers, and so this is for the other, for others that...
Yeah, I know. I, I, I know.
And we're currently doing it for these employees. We're just requesting to increase the rate from $1.50 to $2.50 per year of service.
And this is ongoing, right? Because the more people, I mean, forever, right?
Yes, ma'am.
It's forever. So the more people retire, the... I, I, I hear what you're saying, but I'm troubled by the gap between the, you know, sort of bus driver and the teacher. So I would like to, I like the idea of narrowing that gap, but I just want to know how much it costs.
Okay.
Some of it's based on, on salary anyway, so...
Right.
And that's, that's a, there's a gap there with, between our bus drivers and our teachers.
Yep. But this is a flat fee, so you have the capacity to narrow it a little bit.
Any other discussion? All right, six point zero one, review purchase request of classroom projectors and teacher control panels. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Recently, we considered the adding of, the amending of the budget to include $7 million in addition. And this evening, Dr. Lanter is going to bring us one purchase to come from that additional monies. Mr. Lanter?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Heron. This agenda item is to ask for your consideration of and approval at the next meeting of purchasing classroom projectors and teacher control panels. The Division Instructional Technology Standards for each classroom includes a ceiling-mounted projector and a teacher control panel. Many of our projectors are using the older bulb-based technology, and our teacher control panels have begun to reach the end of life. This purchase would allow the division to upgrade 325 classrooms to the current laser projector standard, as well as the teacher control panel. As a result, we would have no projectors in the division older than three years. The total purchase amount for 325 projectors and 325 control panels is $941,525. The price does include an extended warranty and installation services. Amended fiscal year '21 budget allocates funds to the Technology Department to support this purchase. The purchase would be made using the Division Contract Number 21-15019 with OpTec. Thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Board members? Ms. Cook?
What are you going to do with all the, so there you are. The rotating chairs got me confused. What are you going to do with all the old projectors?
They would be recycled. They are getting end of life. They are five, six, seven years old and needing to be replaced.
Thank you. And just to be clear, this is the, our, this is based on the proposed amended fiscal year budget.
Yes, ma'am.
So this will come to us at the next meeting for approval pending our approval later today of the...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Ms. Young?
I, I, I mean, I'm looking at this. It says 325 projectors. Is, is, we have 325 classrooms in our division?
No, ma'am, we have more than that. However, we have maintained many of them over the years, so quite a few of them have already been upgraded. And we are also, after this, we would have approximately 263 classrooms. That the projectors are within that three-year life, but they're still the older bulb-based technology. And we are considering a year-end purchase item to take care of those remaining classrooms.
That was where I was headed. Okay. So if that year-end purchase is, is approved, then there would be new technology in all of these classrooms? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Mr. Dowell?
I anticipate we're on a refresh rate for these projectors similar to the laptops?
That's correct. The projector's useful life is generally five to seven years, so it's not quite as often as the laptops.
Are we getting ahead of our refresh rate for projectors in doing this?
This would allow us to get very far ahead of our refresh rate. Yes, sir.
How does the refresh rate change with these? I know we don't like the bulb-based projectors, but how does that change?
The laser projectors, there is very minimal operating moving parts inside of the projector, and you also don't have to worry about the bulb degrading over time. So the, the laser projector's useful life is very well extended in the seven-year timeframe. Really very little maintenance, nothing to replace or change.
It, it could be upwards of seven years?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Kelly, if I could add a comment? The reason we're not asking for all of them right now is because we can only do so many, have them delivered and installed by the end of August, which is our extension of time with POs. And we'd have to put the rest in an official end-of-year plan. So we're doing all we can and that can be delivered within our extended time.
So these 300 and whatever, 25 are going to be in before the end of August?
Yes, sir. We've been working with the vendor. They have already started pre-positioning some of the required resources so that basically as soon as this is approved at the next meeting and school is out, they can hit the empty buildings and get to work.
Got you. Thank you. Any other comments, questions from board members? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lanter.
Thank you.
Seven point zero one, presentation by Mosley Architects of the options identified at the 75% stage for school administration and school operations. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're pleased to welcome some guests this evening from Mosley Architects and Mr. Sean Gordon from the county to introduce our guests this evening to give us an update on the county master plan and in particular, the, the buildings dedicated to education. Mr. Gordon?
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening, Mr. Chair, board members. Dr. Heron, thank you for meeting with us this evening to provide you with the facilities master plan update. With... With me tonight is Adam Bricker with Mosley Architects. He's the project manager working on this project. The facilities master plan before you is currently at about 75% completion. And currently, we are working on the facilities master plans for the county administration and the court support functions. We met last week with the James City County Board of Supervisors to provide them an update of the facilities master plan. Our goal is to complete this facilities master plan by the end of the fiscal year, if all goes well. We welcome your feedback and comments to determine the best option for these school facilities as we look 20 years into the future. I'll now turn it over to Adam Bricker to provide you with the update through a PowerPoint presentation.
Thank you for the introduction, Sean. As he said, this is a continuation of what we started last year with the space needs assessment. And this is the first update to the master plan in the county since 1999, I believe. So it's a little over 20 years old. But they didn't do the school administration at the time, so this is the time to catch up with that as well. These are the facilities that we looked at as our plan. The top two are both buildings located here where we are this evening. And then the operation and maintenance building on Jolly Pond Road was part of that as well. And these are all of the various departments that we looked at in our planning efforts. So we did space plans for all of these in the course of the space planning, and this is to master plan for their space needs. And here's our goal. This is consistent for our entire planning effort with James City County and for the Williamsburg-James City County Public Schools to plan for the next 20 years. So we're planning through 2040 to meet the space needs. And it's particularly important for everyone here in that the building we're in now is a site that will, at some point, make room for the expansion of the James Blair Middle School. So we know that at some point, that will come into play. The first one we're going to run through is the school administration site where we are. And the plan that we're going to present for this is conceptual, because we don't yet know where it goes. The purpose of this effort will be a tool so that it can help locate a suitable site. And we'll talk a little bit about some of those characteristics and what will be involved in that. This is some of our, in addition to the space for the building, a key component that we need to plan for is the parking. It's something that we've got a little bit lack of here. The plan is to account for everything through 2040. So when you see the plans for the buildings as well as the sites, this is planning for the 2040 needs. So it's not planning for a five, 10, or 10 years that we did, but this is the ultimate build-out for 2040. And then visitor parking, something that we have here is the ability to use parking at James Blair whenever we're doing a larger function like training or a board meeting as we have this evening. This is our conceptual site plan. The intent of this is really just to show and help illustrate how much site area and what characteristics need to be considered when selecting a site. Obviously, the layout will change once a site is selected. But this outlines the parking requirements. So it shows both the parking that is needed for staff and visitors, as well as parking that's also dashed in. And that's showing how much parking would be needed if it's a standalone facility. So we've looked at this in two ways. The first is if it's on a site by itself. And the other way is if it's sharing a site, as we are here, with a school or another compatible use, where some of the visitor parking could come from the other parking lot when it's not in full use, since meetings like we're having now are after hours. And then also accounting for setbacks, stormwater, and any other areas of the site that may not be billable. These are the site characteristics that we identified with school administration that are critical. And you'll see that the top four are all related. They all deal with the location being somewhere that's accessible to everyone. This is a big component in reaching both the students and parents, making it accessible to staff, and making it accessible to staff who are coming to and from schools or traveling from the administration building to schools and back for their work. So it's four bullet points, but they're all trying to get this somewhere where it makes the most sense in James City County. And then the second part of that, as I mentioned, is that this building's biggest demand for site area is parking, but that only comes during certain periods of time. Obviously, it pairs well with a function where there's a lot of parking, and they may not be sharing it at the same time. So when you have a board meeting with a lot of visitors or you're doing training for staff, you can do that and make use of shared parking. If you're building it as a standalone facility, you'll need a larger site, more site development, and more parking to be able to accommodate everyone who comes here at those busy times. These plans are also conceptual. We got into a little bit more detail since you only have the two facilities and what we did through the county-wide planning process. But what this is really trying to illustrate is the compatibility between departments and how they'll start to go together. A key component of this was, the facility that we're in today was converted from a school, which is difficult to make use of, as you can imagine. It's great if you're trying to create meeting rooms for groups of 30 people or less. But if you're trying to create smaller offices, bigger meeting rooms, or, you know, a combination like we need for the school administration building, it's really inefficient to use. So the layout here would be a purpose-built configuration that's designed to accommodate offices, large meeting rooms, small meeting rooms, and the facilities that you'd need to support the school administrative functions. In our discussion, technology was kind to split themselves between two floors. Our goal is to make it as efficient as we could to show kind of what would be needed to meet the functional goals. This is the second floor of that, and technology would split between the floors, so their offices would be able to go independent from where they load and receive and store their computers and equipment. The detail that we showed here is just to show which areas will have public access and private access. So you can see that student services, even though it's on the second floor, is directly off of that central lobby area. So that would make it accessible to students, parents, when they come here. And then on the first floor here, you come right into a meeting area, so that you have a little bit more control, that people can attend school board meetings, training, other functions, without wandering throughout the entire building, back of house. Our second site that we want to look at is the school operations. They have no plans to relocate. The site that they have works well. And I don't remember the exact year, but at some point in the not-too-distant past, their site was consolidated. So we have room planned west of the facility to expand. So they do have some room to work with there to meet their needs as well. Again, they'll need a little bit more parking for staff than they currently have, as well as some visitors and people coming there day-to-day. Bus parking, currently, they've made use of bus depots throughout the county to get those buses located closer to the children that they're picking up. But they still thought there would be some room, you know, as it progresses, it would be nice to have some additional bus parking at the facility for maintenance and storage. One component, and you'll see in our two options we looked at, it was initially an obstacle, but I think we found a way around it, is there's a fuel island that is very close to the building that makes it a little bit challenging to expand the building itself. But the tanks are not located in either of the options that we proposed. So I'll show that here in just a minute, and how we think that could be improved. Option one is the preferred option. Option two was to try to work around the fuel island if it was impossible to move it, or cost prohibitive to move it. And another key component that we have included in this site plan is trying to create a little bit better flow on the site for the buses. Right now, the buses go in and out the same entrance. The goal would be to have a dedicated entrance and exit so that they've got continuous flow, and they're not getting jammed up on each other as they're coming and going from the site. This is the site plan. North is to the left of the page, so it's rotated to fit the slide. The green box is the existing operations building. And the option one is shown in the blue boxes. And then the option two for expanding the operations building is the red box. I think there's a laser on here. So, perfect. So this was the preferred method to expand. This has drive-through bus bays that are oriented this direction, and they're the optimal width and length for servicing buses. So the preference was to extend and add bus bays, and then convert some of their base space into administrative space to meet their office needs. This is what we deem to be the most efficient way to expand the building and keep that drive-through bay system that they have now. Right here is their existing fueling island. So the buses come around, and then they have to loop through here as they go out. And it does sort of force the buses to go around or through the fuel island just to navigate the site. So, but what we discovered was that the fuel tanks are actually over here. They're not in the way of our planned expansion. So the plan would be to relocate only the fueling island portion, but utilizing the existing tanks, so long as they were surveyed and still in good working order. And that would allow for buses to enter, either go through the fueling island or bypass the fueling island, circulate around the site. And in this scenario, this building is not here. They could make a full loop and then go out. So they're not crossing paths with each other, because they're typically leaving to the east or the top of the page. And we've got a continuous loop, so they're not trying to make all those hard right and left turns throughout the site. And it would also allow the opportunity for expanding some additional bus parking here. One item that we discussed as we were covering some recent developments with COVID that was not included in the space planning was the ability to store all of the things that you've had to store as you tried to consolidate classrooms and realizing it's very hard to sort through desks and office furniture and pieces that you have that kind of get tucked in a corridor or crammed into a storage room. So another item that we've included for option one is some sort of storage building that would possibly have someone who keeps track of all of that stuff for you. So as I said, it wasn't in the space plan, but it came up during our meeting with county administration that this might be something worth considering, a dedicated, not huge, but some place to store desks, furniture, components that need service, things that are being worked on, things that are in storage for a period of time, and we know we're going to bring them back. So that is what the box shown over here is for. This is just a schematic plan of that. So the existing end of the building is right here. We would be expanding the office space within the existing footprint and then adding base space to the end of the building. And this is the second floor, extending the existing mezzanine, and then kind of capturing the existing mezzanines and some of the base space to build out that administration area, which currently stops right here. So this is about twice as much space as they have now. And I'm sure if you've been there, it's quite tight in there. So I'm sure you can all appreciate that. And this is just a little recap. So these are, it's a little small to see on the screen right now, but these are the space needs that we submitted from the study last year. This is just showing that the gross square footage needed for the school administration building in 2040 is just around 60,000 square feet. That's actually not much different than the space that you have right now, but you'd get a lot more use for it, assuming it's a purpose-built structure versus converting something into office space. And then just a little over 40,000 square feet for school operations, including all of those bus bays and work areas. That's the end of what I have prepared for you, but I would love to hear your feedback and questions and comments you have on it.
Comments, questions from board members? Mr. Dow?
Thank you, sir, for your report and your update. I'm curious, if you can give me some understanding on the relocation of the fuel island? Are we talking about the underground cells? Taking a look at those?
That was our concern. So whenever we were looking at our site plan, and I'll go back to that slide. So you can see what we were going for with trying to have an entrance here and a full loop to circulate. Right now, there is no entrance or exit over here. This is the only entrance. The two issues we had were, we were concerned initially with expanding the footprint that it was getting very close to the fuel island structure. But the tanks themselves are not stored in this building footprint. So assuming that the fuel tanks are not leaking or have any issues, we don't know the exact age on them, but we would not be impacting the tanks. We would only be relocating the pumps.
Gotcha.
That would be the plan. It is expensive and challenging when you start working with underground fuel tanks, decommissioning them, decontaminating the soil. It can definitely be done, but it's just a little bit more work, and it'd be preferable to avoid it if we can.
But by avoiding it, are you talking about not digging to do the inspection? Or are you talking about, what are we saying?
Well, I think what we had talked about with school administration, that we'd still want to survey them and make sure they were going to last a long time. If they were in bad enough shape that they needed to be replaced for their function, then it would make sense to replace them. But the goal is to plan the expansion so that we didn't have to replace them. It wasn't part of the same project necessarily. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir. Thank you. My only other question, I think, is on the potential school board, or not school board, excuse me, school storage building.
Mm-hmm.
Is that something we don't have yet? We don't have any storage?
I believe we have a small amount of rental storage space right now. I don't know, Mr. Snipes's or Mr. Kever?
So that would be a...
I'm correct. Okay.
That'd be an entirely new offering that we certainly would need. I'm sure we've needed that.
Yeah, I believe, so for example, if you take the current situation that we're in, we have virtual classrooms piled with desks. And when all the kids come back, and we have less desks in a classroom, we have nowhere to put them. And so there are certain times when you're moving furniture in and out and need the storage.
Yeah.
That's an exceptional example, of course.
Maybe a good point to make with that. We have a similar issue on the county side. They've got the Jamestown Center. And then items that are getting decommissioned end up in the hallways or tucked in a corner somewhere. And the goal there would be to have a storage facility with someone who's tracking what's there, so that instead of things getting tucked away that stay there for years and years, someone knows what's being stored there. There's a log of it, and it gives them the ability to repair things, track things. If something is in storage that's planned to be used, but it's been there a while, they purge that out, and they either sell it, donate it, or junk it if it's in bad shape. So the goal would just be to have a little bit better active management of the resources.
Thank you. It's always been used as a storage space sometimes.
I noticed that when I came in.
Ms. Young?
The only thing I have to say about the storage facility on that plan is I think it's long overdue. I think if anything, this pandemic has shown us that we need a place to put things so that they're not in the way of students and staff. And I mean, just walking through our buildings, which are already crowded, there's already a lot of storage being done, and I think it's unfortunate. It'd be very reasonable, I think, to have that as part of the plan. So, thank you.
You're welcome. It's not unique to James City County, that's, or Williamsburg. That is, we see it all the time in schools and administration buildings. It's very difficult managing all the pieces and parts that you have.
Sad one. I know a lot of Navy or Army supply officers would love that job, being in charge of that.
Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a comment and a question. So, and I think this question is actually for you, Dr. Herron, and your team. In our CIP, we've seen a placeholder for building a new central office, but we haven't seen a placeholder for expanding the operations building. I know this is a 20-year plan, so maybe it's the second half of our 10-year, but I just wanted to know if we're going to start seeing that in our CIP.
I think you'll see both of these in the CIP that you'll see next year.
Thank you. I'm glad to hear that. And the other thing, thank you very much, you know, for your work. And, Mr. Gordon, thank you for being here. I really appreciated seeing four bullet points about centrally located. I think that is critically important, and I hope that we stick to that and that we don't stray from that.
I can tell you, that was from Dr. Herron and all of school administration. They drove that point home with us very clearly. Those were, virtually every point was tied to that. That is a key component, and it certainly made us aware of what the number-one priority was, was reaching everyone.
Because not only do we have comparatively few schools... Because not only do we have comparatively few schools in our school division compared to other divisions our size around the state, but they're also oddly located based on where there was a little dump or where there was available land. And so, it is my hope that we don't fall to that again in terms of doing what's convenient rather than what's best for the school division.
And the architecture of our county makes it very difficult too, as long as it is to put facilities where they need to be, like for the maintenance, maintenance, the maintenance layer area is pretty much centrally located, but it's a long way from Stonehouse and James River. So, it's.
Right.
Another one are our geographical challenges.
But, but our geography is challenging and also we're on, you know, a peninsula as well, which makes it, you know, in terms of waterways and, and getting places. But, but that doesn't explain some locations of our schools.
True.
Let me just be clear, doesn't.
Not arguing that.
Doesn't explain that.
Ms. Ombi. I thought I saw your hand go up. Apologize. Any other comments from board members?
I do appreciate the county and I do appreciate the good work that you've done and I appreciate the county, including the schools in the, in the master plan. It's, it's an important part of the county and it's an important part of the, of the county's planning and I appreciate them taking the long-term look at, look at that. You know, I don't want to, I don't want to knit the master plan, but you know, fuel tanks of unknown, unknown age just probably shouldn't be replaced anyway if you're going to plan it on, well, not the 2040 or, or far, probably farther than that because that's generally what we end up doing anyway. So, but I, I do appreciate the good work that you, that you've done so far and look forward to seeing the other 25% when we get there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments from board members? Great. Thanks. Do we need a break or should we keep going? All right, we're moving on. 702 21st Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee Annual Report. Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. I believe Ms. Walter is going to introduce Kate Snipes to present the annual report this evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Dr. Heron and members of the board. It is my pleasure to introduce to you tonight Mrs. Kate Snipes, the Assistant Director of Economic Development at James City County and the Chair of the 21st Century and Career Ready Advisory Council. This is Mrs. Snipes' second year as the Chair and her third year as a member overall. She's been an asset to the committee and to WJCC schools during this time. Mrs. Snipes is passionate about connecting WJCC students with opportunities in the WJCC community and we are thankful for her service. Tonight, Mrs. Snipes will be sharing with you a brief summary of highlights from this year's annual report.
I will be brief. I know y'all have been here a long time. Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Heron, staff and guests. It's been my privilege to serve on the 21st Century Career Ready Advisory Committee along with 18 or so other people who have volunteered their time and talents to this critical effort. As you know, the main focus of the committee is to maintain invaluable communication between educators and employers. Members of our local business community can help us focus on teaching the skills needed for students to be successful in their chosen careers as well as reminding students of the need and benefits of embracing lifelong learning habits. The committee members are very focused on supporting all students in their quests to find meaningful careers. Our members are cognizant that career paths may involve certifications, two and four-year degrees, on-the-job training and combinations of all of these. Primarily, we have discussed the very real possibility that the ideal career is as of yet unknown to many of our students and perhaps one of the best opportunities WJCC and our community can offer is a way to explore potential careers. I would say most of us, at least while in high school, would not have been able to identify more than 20 or 30 possible careers. Our business community can become invaluable partners in this effort to expand career awareness. With that in mind, our committee has been very engaged this year, although we've had, obviously, to make changes and adapt to a virtual environment. With the absence of in-person events, we worked this year on video interviews in lieu of our annual Manufacturing Day tours. In the first month of availability, those videos were viewed over 300 times. We hope to expand virtual options for career planning, which could provide opportunities for students and parents to access the information and consider career options at home on their own schedule. One of our larger projects involved creating a database with business contacts who are willing to partner with the school division. These career connections, as we call them, may take the form of job shadowing or internships, guest speakers in classrooms, for instance. Committee members reached out to our own networks, extending personal invitations to participate with the school. To date, over 130 community and business leaders have responded positively to becoming a partner with the school division. We owe a sincere thank you to Mrs. Walters and Mrs. Thrift and the IT team for helping to create the tools needed for the outreach and maintenance of those contacts. Committee is very proud of the increased options the school division was able to add in healthcare professions through the partnership with Thomas Nelson Community College. Not only are students able to graduate with a certification to enter the medical field as a nurse's aide, EMT or medical assistant, but partnerships with local employers provide immediate employment opportunities. Being ready to enter the workforce and being prepared to further your education in the chosen field is an excellent example of career readiness. Chef's Go program is another example of educating students while training them for a specific skill set. The committee looks forward to creating similar opportunities with skilled trades, hospitality and other sectors. Our report includes highlights and committee recommendations and I'll just highlight a few. I encourage you to read the full list. I know you may have heard otherwise from various parts of the community, but for our committee, we believe that virtual environments create tremendous opportunities and we encourage the school division to embrace fully the opportunities to use virtual in the future. New Horizons is a wonderful resource. We encourage the school division to maximize our student enrollment there while recognizing that limited spaces offered are not the only way we can support students pursuing similar careers. Thomas Nelson and William &amp; Mary, our local business community, are tremendous assets. We are rich and very fortunate in our community. While internships may not be right for every student, the school division should fully explore the many ways that organizations and their leadership can engage with our students, faculty and staff. And finally, a full-time CTE content coordinator and career coach at every high school would also go a very long way to helping find students and their passions and set them on a very successful path. I extend my sincere gratitude to staff for guiding our committee, to the faculty for the efforts in the classroom and beyond, to Ms. Young for her participation, to you and the administration for your full support of this important work. I'm happy to answer any questions, but we rely heavily on staff for the technical information. And so, if I can't answer, I will quickly call Ms. Walters to my rescue.
Any questions from board members? Ms. Ombi.
It's not a questions, just thank you very much for the report. It's really thorough. I'm like reading through it and huge supporter of the initiative of CTE and, and thanks for your service as well.
Ms. Ombi.
Thanks again for your presentation and I think it's, it's critical that as we move forward with expanding CTE locally, we do need that full-time CTE person in each of our buildings to help students connect, especially as we broaden those partnerships with our businesses. I know when we were able to travel and attended national school board functions, what I learned from my colleagues in other states or the states that are doing CTE well, have, have that designated person in a building to, to connect students, to be a resource, to provide information. And so, I know that when I served on CTE years, four years ago, this was in, this was a request. And so, just keep, keep it in there and, and one day, maybe it will be funded.
Along with the 10th elementary school.
Yeah. But that's critical, so keep, keep that in there. Thank you.
Any other comments from board members? Ms. Young.
So, I thank them for their hard work. They, they make it easy. Hard. And when you think of the students that this, this affects and their opportunities that they're trying to show, I mean, these interviews, if you've seen those little videos, they're, they're amazing. And as a student, you have an opportunity to get an idea of what's going on out there in the real world. And it's especially student for, especially important for our kids that are about to, to jump in there. So, but so again, thank you.
Yeah, I would just like to add that too. Thank you for your service. I know this has been a most challenging year and a half or so and so I know, I appreciate the good work in, in meeting that challenge. I do know that at New Horizons, one of our high schools, they had a little competition there about who could get the most additional signups and one of our high schools actually got the highest percentage increase there. So, that was, that's a good sign.
That's very exciting.
It's a good thing, so. But I appreciate the work of you and your committee and thank you very much for your service.
I do have to give one shout out to the businesses that we've called upon to do those, to do those videos. There's just, they are very eager and willing to jump on to the yes always. Oftentimes, the logistics take a little longer to get sort of sorted out, but the willingness is immediate and it's really tremendous.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Student Advisory Committee Annual Report. Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Bouchois is going to give the, the brief report this evening. Thank you.
Good evening again. I'm happy to be here to represent the Student Advisory Committee. The Student Advisory Committee serves to encourage student voice, share information and make recommendations to the school board about the division and its governance. It is composed of the superintendent and two school board members, 12 students, four from each high school representing each grade level. We did meet four times this year. All of those were via Zoom. Each time, there was a different discussion centered on, it's, it's usually about what's currently happening in our school. So, as you can imagine, this year it was around student participation in our remote learning opportunities. The students were very forthcoming in that having cameras on was a good idea and having the teachers ask questions randomly. And they also admitted that there was a learning curve in being able to identify where to find assignments and, and how to use the different platforms. And, and they talked very openly as the year went on how that became much easier and really very productive for them. So, it was interesting to listen to them from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. We also discussed return to learn at one of our meetings. We spent a lot of time talking about the mitigation strategies. They felt like they were, that would make them very, feel very safe at school. They were honest about, some of them wanting to prefer to wait until after spring break to return. As we moved to the hybrid learning, the students that, that did choose to come back into the school were very open about being glad to be back in the school. And they were very honest that an important part of that is that social aspect, especially at high school. They also, some of them acknowledged that they learned their concepts faster in person rather than online, while others said that they had really felt very successful online during the year. So, it's always an interesting group to, to hear their conversations and their different thoughts. They had two main recommendations for next year, that we ensure that we are, have a plan in place for counseling for students as we return to school and that we consider having after-school office hours for students to get extra help from their teachers in order to catch up. And I would invite any of the board members who participated this year, if you have anything you'd like to add.
Always a very, very engaging committee and the students are not afraid to, to tell their side of the story, for sure.
Comments from board members? Ms. Ombi.
Just to echo, I think that it's great that we touch base with our resident experts on a regular basis because they do have the critical insight that sometimes we don't have. So, I appreciate their willingness to, to share openly with us.
Ms. Young.
I would just echo it. It's, one of the things I'm ice impressed with is how, how honest the students are, which gives, it really helps because it gives us a better picture of what's actually needed, what we. I appreciate their time. Thank you. For, for running that because I know it's like chasing cats.
They're very honest and by, by the same time, they're very thoughtful.
They are thoughtful, very thoughtful.
And it's, it's really impressive.
One of the things that I remember a couple of years ago when we were talking about having later start times for our high school students, which is, you know, often rocket to talk about, they had lots of reasons why it shouldn't. Came up with lots of reasons why it shouldn't, even though they would like it to change. So, it was an interesting, interesting insight to all of the responsibilities that they, they had.
Yeah, they saw, they see both sides of the, of the, of the equation. It's, it's, it's pretty interesting. Thank you, Ms. Bouchois. Appreciate it.
7.04 Special Education Advisory Committee Annual Report. Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to introduce Mr. Willam this evening to present the SEAC report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. During the 2020-2021 school year, between September and February, SEAC held monthly virtual meetings with the majority of the SEAC meetings allowing time for members of SEAC to discuss ways to complete the goals that have been established in 2019, 2020 and continue for the current school year. This school year has been particularly challenging for our students with special needs as they continued to grapple with learning through a virtual platform. Some of the division's special education students went back to school early in the school year. The scheduled changes that they faced as schools closed and reopened were difficult for them, but staff worked hard to make sure that their needs were met and that IEPs were addressed. SEAC also sought to continue educating the committee on relevant professional development happening in the district and opportunities for growth outside the committee to an area of special education. SEAC also offers a forum for community members to offer suggestions and concerns as well as provide educational opportunities and the exchange of information on available services and resources for people with disabilities. SEAC focused on two goals for 20, for 2020, 2021. Goal one was the division's stance on inclusive education as it relates to special education students, and they suggest that be continued in 2021, 2022. They developed policy language recommendations for inclusion, which included WJCC schools have an inclusive culture which values potential in every child, that research supports the value of collaboration for all children, that we have high expectations for all students regardless of their abilities, we have inclusion of students with varying abilities and their supportive participation in non-academic subjects and extracurricular activities, recognize and value contributions of students with different abilities to their overall well-being and diversity of their communities. We have an inclusive community of teachers and staff who are well-supported to enact inclusive practices. Second goal we had was increase and diversify disability representation in library materials. Again, suggestion that be continuing in 2021, 2022. Titles and authors will continue to be researched by the committee and given to the division to share with the media specialist. At our October committee, the committee decided to continue working on the goals that could be continued from last year and provide opportunities at forthcoming meetings to learn about what is happening in the district, in Virginia and nationally in the area of special education. The committee felt that since inclusion had been a major topic for the last few years, that we should make a proposed policy change the focus of our work for the year. Monica Grillo agreed to lead a subcommittee which would review inclusion policies across the country and work with the committee to establish proposed language for a policy recommendation to the Board of Education. The SEAC made progress toward the established goals of 2020, 2021. The committee focused on the school media centers as a means to encourage inclusion, provide access to inclusive ideas and educate students and staff about individuals with disabilities. The SEAC would like to recommend that more books about a broader spectrum of disabilities be represented in the libraries. Recommendations for the board, for the school board for the 2021, 2020, 2022 school year. Number one, continue to work with the division on inclusive education policy as it relates to special education students. Number two, increase disability awareness recognition in WJCC schools during Disability Awareness Month in March. And number three, continue to increase and diversify disability representation in library materials. In conclusion, the SEAC would like to thank and acknowledge the school board for addressing SEAC's recommendations from last year. The SEAC would also like to thank Dr. Heron and our board representative, Ms. Lisa Ombi, for supporting our ongoing efforts on behalf of our special education students and Dr. Suzanne Creasy for her work with the SEAC members. Recommendations for committee chair positions were made at our May meeting and will be voted on at the next SEAC meeting in which there is a quorum. The SEAC respectfully submits our aforementioned goals and recommendations to the WJCC school board. We thank the school board and Special Education Department for the support of SEAC for this past year.
Thank you. Board members? Ms. Ombi.
Thank you, Michael, for this presentation and all the hard work. I know SEAC has spent the last several years looking at inclusion and I think maybe it's timely now with recommendations from J-LARC and then recent changes from the General Assembly. So, I'm looking forward to possibly have the new equity position we'll dovetail with looking at inclusion policy. And Ms. Bouchois spoke about our strategic plan and focusing on that next year or two. So, this is just finally all coming together and so I appreciate all the hard work of SEAC for the last several years.
And thank you for your support as well. Other board members?
Thanks for your patience. I know that, I saw you out there at, what, seven o'clock? I think you've been waiting for two.
But lots of board members. I empathize with your, with what you go through every night.
Anyway, thank you. Thank you for all your work. Anyway, thank you. Thank you for all your work on the committee and everything else I know you do for the school system. So, thank you.
Besides Mrs. Humble's comments, I'm sure you enjoyed the riveting TV that you were watching.
I was paying attention.
But once again, thank you for your service, and this has been a challenging period. And I do appreciate your service, and we do look to CAC for guidance and for your picture of the way we should be moving forward. So I thank you for all of that. Thank you. 7.05, Forward WJCC Schools 2021-2022. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Keever is going to give a brief presentation tonight under the banner of Forward WJCC Schools. Mr. Keever?
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening, members of the school board. A brief presentation tonight relative to Forward WJCC, starting first with our current dashboard metrics. You'll note more zeros that we're reporting this week in terms of student staff positive, staff quarantine, students in quarantine. Remember, we post this data first thing on Monday morning. We didn't post yesterday. We posted first thing this morning. I will say that if we were reporting this out next week, the number would go up because we did see some students having to quarantine today as a result of a close contact designation and a positive piece. So this is, we don't track it on a day-to-day basis. We do the best we can to report out first day of the beginning week, but we do feel very good about the numbers as of right now. In our last conversation at the Striker Center, we shared information on student-based, school-based student vaccine clinics. Wanted to share with you that we feel pretty good about what those numbers looked like over the course of the two weeks that we offered that on school site. Somewhere in the neighborhood of 421 students were vaccinated across our secondary schools when we were offering those clinics there. We will turn back around and offer additional clinics on the 8th, 10th, 15th, and 17th at those same schools. In fact, it's the same set of times for those schools. Information will be going to parents in the community, we hope tomorrow, with the registration link. Want to also mention that we are going to really suggest that students who participated in the community event at War Hill on the 14th of May take advantage of the in-school clinic opportunity at the designated time and date. And so that'll be in the communication as well, but wanted to share that with this group. There were some questions in our last presentation around summer school and wanted to give a couple of quick updates. We'll start with just some of the data pieces, and then I have a couple prepared remarks that I want to share with you. We have currently about 470 students enrolled in the elementary school summer school option. There are still some seats remaining there. You'll note the number for middle and then high. The one thing I think we should point out in terms of high school is that you typically see the number of high school students participating in summer school climb over the last two or three weeks of the school year. So it is not unusual to not see full participation in high school, summer school, at this point. That is going to continue to grow, and we will be prepared for that. You'll also see the staffing scenario. Mr. Dow asked specifically about that last time. We feel at this juncture fairly comfortable with where we are in terms of staffing. The positions that are still available aren't necessarily full instructional positions. There are some classified positions and some of those kinds of things. So as of right now, we feel fairly comfortable with where we are staffing as well. Also wanted to point out that all of our K-5 students will have a, whether they're participating in summer learning or not, will have a guide that we are producing for students to be able to use at home over the course of the summer. We'll have grade level specific content, suggestions for activities, and even some ideas for how to participate in learning without technology. So wanted to share that with you. Our schools are continuing to address unfinished learning for students in the fourth quarter through daily intervention instruction. As we've talked about on Friday, students who have demonstrated the need for additional instructional time with specific skills meet with teachers and staff in person or virtually for supplemental instruction. At the secondary level, students receive additional one-to-one or small group instruction using course materials, curriculum coordinators designed to assist with and build on those essential skills. Other schools have selected priority subject areas and deliver remediation instruction targeted to students' need within the subject area. Students have been invited to participate in summer instruction programs based on their needs as they relate to some of these items: attendance, meaningful engagement, academic achievement, and the need for social-emotional instruction that will be provided in summer school. Many students have demonstrated needs across multiple criteria areas. If a family declined the summer school, school staff extended invitation to the next student on the grade level list. Elementary programs are very close to capacity, as I mentioned. Middle school staff continue to communicate with students' families to encourage their participation in summer learning. And high school enrollment, as I mentioned, will continue to grow as families make decisions based on final grades and credits needed for graduation. If a family has a question about participation in summer school, they should reach out to their student's school and talk directly with the school counselor. For elementary and middle school summer programming, curriculum coordinators have identified priority literacy and math standards of learning and skills to guide summer school instruction. Instruction will be further informed by individual student data to ensure teachers are delivering small group instruction specifically targeted to students' opportunities for growth. In addition to daily literacy and math instruction and practice, students will participate in social-emotional instruction to strengthen the competency students need to be successful when they return in August. Those competencies include self and social awareness, self-management, and relationship building. At both levels, students will also have the opportunity to engage in collaborative learning activities in which they will apply the taught academic and social-emotional skills. At the middle school level, programming will include opportunities for students to engage in learning activities that will expose them to career options, develop their study skills for more rigorous coursework, and engage them with supportive mentors. High school recovery instruction will be delivered through a blend of small group instruction and computer-adapted learning modules and ed-mentum. The small group instruction is a component that is being added to recovery courses this summer because we know students at all levels need opportunities to increase their academic achievement and reconnect with staff and peers. The ed-mentum component of the recovery courses is self-paced while students are on campus for that instruction, allowing students to successfully earn recovery credits for two or possibly three courses during the summer session. High school students also have the opportunity, as I think we've discussed before, to enroll in accelerated courses of HPE1 and Economics and Personal Finance. Again, we encourage students and families to contact their school counselor for more information about these course offerings. That concludes the abbreviated presentation on Forward WJCC. Be happy to answer questions.
Ms. Humble?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Keever, so how did these students enrollment numbers compare with the number of students enrolled in summer school last year?
Pre-COVID.
Pre-COVID year.
So we would want, you'd be looking for the 2019, summer of 2019, summer school data. Let's get that together for you and send that to you in a follow-up correspondence.
Okay. That would be great.
Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Keever. So after the semester, first semester was over, we kind of did a look back, and just in terms of grades as one measure, we looked at where we thought students were, you know, compared to previous years. You showed us how many students had 1F, 2Fs, et cetera. Are we going to do that kind of at the wrap-up, looking back at the end of the year too?
Absolutely. Once we have all of the data, we'll present it to the school board.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments from board members? Mr. Dow?
Thank you for this update. I appreciate it. It sounds like that, I think what I'm hearing from you, put it that way, is that for any student that does desire, a parent does desire, that their student has an opportunity to learn over the summer, when they identify themselves, we'll be able to meet that need. I think that's what I'm hearing.
We're going to do our absolute very best, Mr. Dow.
Yeah, I think we're on pace for that. Thank you. You know, you bring up the summer instruction, priority learning standards, individual student needs, social-emotional competencies. It just so happens, I had this question last week. There was a concerned parent that, for the first time, they heard this buzzword, "social-emotional learning", as if it was something new. And I did my very best to explain to them what that was. Probably didn't do a very good job at that. But you bring it up here, "social-emotional competencies, learning over summer instruction." Can you give us an idea, a little bit better detail about what that means? Because I think out there in the community, for folks that this seems new, "social-emotional learning," it looks like it's getting into an area where a parent needs to be doing these things, a guardian rather than a teacher. Can you explain what that looks like in a school environment?
I would contend that we all need to be working with our children, whether it be the school staff, or parents, or guardians, on social-emotional competencies. Part of the reason that the school division has shared a survey as far and wide over the course of the last couple of weeks is to gauge where our community is in terms of understanding what those social-emotional learning competencies are. There are specific competencies that are identified through the CASL model. And I think that one of the scenarios that we'll utilize is that the data that comes back from that survey will help inform our work in the upcoming school year and school years. And it looks a little bit different in each of our grade levels. It involves how do we regulate ourselves? How do we know how we're interacting with one another? What are the things that I need to do to best look after myself? And how do I respect that in terms of your needs and looking after yourself? So it takes different forms at different levels, but I will say that it is a total effort. It's not just a school effort, and it's not just a home effort, but we're all working on it together.
Collaborative.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. And knowing that the school has been engaged in that type of learning, partnering with parents to raise and rear children in the way that we would like them to be successful in a society, in a community, where is that, because this is a concern that I've gotten this last week, where is the line that an educator will not cross in social-emotional learning?
It's a really difficult hypothetical to talk through. And I guess what I would suggest, if approached by a parent and asked that question, is I would want to have parent talk directly with the school principal or the school counselor and say, "As I think about social-emotional learning, these are the concerns that I have as the parent. Can you help me understand what's happening in this particular building or working with my particular student?"
Sure, sure.
And I think that gives us an opportunity to have some sense of conversation around what it means.
That line, though, is not necessarily drawn in training, though.
I would contend that the line is a part of the competencies and how we are helping it be part of the curriculum and helping it be part of the day-to-day experience that students have in the classroom. Not sure if that's answering your question.
I'm happy with that. Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Young?
Yes, I had a couple. Mr. Keever, one of the things I had written down, my notes to talk about tonight, was there needed to be a survey to assess what is needed to accommodate and manage some of the current mental health issues. Can you tell me what, you said that you sent out a survey in the past couple of weeks about social-emotional. Can you tell me, what is, number one, what has been the response? And was it sent to our teachers also?
Ms. Young, I do not have the response data in front of me. It was shared, as I understand, with the entire WJCC community. So staff members received it, families received it, and were asked to complete it within a two-week window, maybe two and a half weeks. And I believe that window closed at the end of the month of May. I'd have to check that to be sure.
At some point, can you relay to us what information you gathered from that survey? I bring this up because I've had several conversations, one recently with a teacher that was talking about some of the things that's happening at her school and, I mean, our teachers are exhausted. I mean, that's one of the things I've noted. But I would just like to, I just would like them to know that at least something is being done. If they didn't hear about the survey, I don't know how it was sent out. But I know as a teacher, if it came on my email, I mean, I've never seen it if I was busy. But I'm very concerned about the mental health of our teachers at this point. Very concerned.
We'll certainly bring back more information. It was touched on briefly in the Goal One presentation, where staff talked about the CASL model and the different competencies for social-emotional learning. I think it's something that we will have more conversations about as we go into next year. And then the data we're about to get is going to assist us in our planning to meet the needs of students where they are. So we'll certainly come back and plan at some point, leading into next year, to provide more information to the board, to the community.
Okay. And then the other question I had was about how these students were selected. Were they self-selected? Or, I guess in some cases, they were invited?
For summer school?
Yes.
The term invitation takes a couple of different meanings based on
I understand.
Some of those criteria pieces that I referenced earlier. So in some cases, the invitation was, "We think you would really benefit from summer school." In other cases, it was, "You need to take a summer school class in order to stay on track for graduation, and I'm inviting you to do that so that you can graduate on time." So I think that the invitation process varies based on student need, I guess is a better way to say it.
Right. Thank you. And some of the things that are going to happen at summer school are to address loss, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Learning loss. Okay.
Absolutely.
Ms. Humble?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Keever, just to circle back around, forgive me if I'm pestering, because I know you're going to give me information comparing 2019, the summer of 2019.
Yes, ma'am.
But can you give us, what was the thinking with regard to, like, was there a percentage increase, given COVID and learning loss? Was there a conversation about, "We might need to expand summer school a certain percentage"? Like, can you give us any idea over what we typically do? Can you give us that kind of information tonight, or does that need to come later too?
I think we'll provide that once we get the information from last year as well. I think the intention was to serve every student who needed it. In practical terms, finding the staff to staff summer school was an incredible challenge based on the fact that our teachers are exhausted. So we can certainly provide, by comparing the data, you'll get a sense of the number of students being served. I think the key thing is that there was a lot of work gone into identifying the students who most needed it, and they were offered the places first.
Thank you. And then, a comment that Mr. Dow made made me think of this question, Mr. Keever, with regard to the social-emotional learning. Can you tell us, is there a connection at all with the portrait of a graduate and the state's requirements, those five Cs, which we talked about earlier tonight, collaboration? And I can't remember what the Cs stand for. There's five of them, and some of those have to do with social-emotional learning, I think. Can you make that connection? Or am I just leaping there?
I don't think it's a leap. I think that there are connections to be made. I'm not, I don't believe necessarily that working with the SCL competencies is a part of the profile of a graduate. I believe it's a part of our work with students on a day-to-day basis. So there are facets of social-emotional learning that would fit within the parameters of the five Cs that you're talking about: communication, collaboration, my ability to work in groups, my ability to be an effective, productive member of the citizenry.
Thank you. I guess just the point that I'm making is that the social-emotional learning isn't something new, and it's not far afield. It's well within the realm of education and something that we have always done. I think there's a special lens that we're looking at it because of COVID, but those connections have always been there.
It's also, it's being named. I mean, I think it's being called out and being named as a social-emotional learning, SCL. In education, we have a tendency to capture the buzzwords and capture the acronyms, and in this case, that's part of what you've seen occurred. But it is very much a part of what has been going on in WJCC and will continue to go on in the school division.
Thank you for that clarification.
Any other comments from board members?
Thank you, Mr. Keever. I appreciate it. One question I do have to ask is, our public comment this morning, this afternoon, was, I guess it was this evening, wasn't it, was about masks and barriers and those types of things. There's any thought about when we'll be able to start reducing some of that?
I believe that we intend to close the year with the mitigation strategies that we have in place, and that we will spend time over the course of the summer being prepared for 21-22, taking into consideration particular guidelines and requirements from VDOE and VDH. and VDH, what the Centers for Disease Control are recommending in terms of how to best mitigate. And our goal would be for folks to be absolutely safe in our schools, and we will do everything possible to ensure that our mitigation guidelines for next year align with that.
So as we go through the end of the year and into the summer, the CDC will obviously probably modify theirs and the executive order from the governor and VDH and VDE and all that stuff. So all that stuff will change.
We've attempted to be as nimble as possible when it comes to the guidelines as they shift.
Got you. Thank you.
And you have been. You've been wonderful, and you deserve credit for that. And there's only a couple more weeks left of school.
Right. Exactly. So that takes us to 8.01, Revised Policy, JFC Student Conduct.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Pujol is here to present several policies this evening, and first one being 8.01, Student Conduct.
Good evening again. I am here for JFC Student Conduct. This one, this policy is reviewed annually by our Code of Conduct Committee and is brought to you annually for consideration. Just as a reminder, substantial revisions did occur last year to prepare for our change from DCV reporting to the Sbar reporting. So our overall revisions are fairly minor this year. To begin, on lines 21 through 26, we deleted those lines to remove redundancy with lines 50 to 58. On line 125, we did change the word noisy in the verbal aggression rule to loud. The committee felt that was a more objective word choice. The rest of the changes are in our electronics devices rule. Personal-owned was added to lines 217 and 233 to differentiate devices. On lines 239 through 247, the wording for the use of personal devices as instructional devices is deleted due to the availability of our division-level devices. And revisions were completed in close collaboration with our instructional technology leadership to ensure alignment with the one-to-one program. There will be a training component for teachers and administrators regarding Sbar. And one of the things that has come out of this is a universal referral form, incident referral form, that will be put into place for next year.
I think from the policy committee's perspective, we didn't have any issues with these recommended changes, updates. Are there any questions from the board? All right. With that, we'll move on to policy, excuse me, Item 8.02, policy, Revised Policy, JFCA Student Dress Code. Dr. Hare?
Thank you, Ms. Pujol.
For this policy, there is no matching VSBA policy. We do think it's a relevant policy to keep, but we did make some revisions. On lines 25 through 30, you'll see that we just revised the wording for clarity. On lines 33 through 38, we revised it to improve the objectivity and consistency of the policy wording. And on lines 40 and 41 were added to support nondiscrimination requirements.
Any questions? Yes, ma'am. Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is something that we haven't talked about in some time, which is kind of nice. But there was some time ago where we spent, you know, several hours discussing uniforms. So just to refresh my memory and everyone else's, uniforms are essentially a school-based decision if there are, in terms of dress codes, if there's a uniform that says "school-based decision" and then applies to that school community only. Is that correct? That's how this policy is applied at the school?
This policy supports their ability to make that decision.
Or not.
Or not. Correct.
Thank you.
Doleenby?
I guess just building on that, since it was a few years ago when we had a very long, thorough conversation about dress codes, at this point, we have one school that still has dress codes? Or do we have no schools?
The uniforms?
Yeah.
No uniform.
That's what I meant, uniforms. Does James River not have? No. So then, what was it? Was it just?
Optional, I think, is.
I believe James River still has a uniform.
I think so.
I do.
I do. That's what I thought. So we have one school that still does.
Or?
You can knock doubt.
Knocked doubt, right?
Correct.
Okay.
I always do that.
So for that, so for that reason, we need to continue to keep that in there, because we still have one school. I just wanted clarification. I thought maybe for a minute, no schools did. And then, so the dress code is, policy is specific, or the regulations are specific to each school, to each building? Like, if I was reading this as a parent, how do you know what is or is not permissible?
It supports what the school addresses. And they have worked, school leadership has worked to create a consistency with that at each level.
And so where is that information?
In the handbook, the student handbook.
It's in the student handbook. Okay.
Does that mean that each individual school has their own handbook? Yes, okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments?
8.03, Revised Policy, JGCA Teacher Removal Students From Class.
Thank you. This policy is coming before you to be revised to align with VSBA models. It's a little different. You know, usually when we do our policies, they are the framework, and then we typically have regulations that really go into the details of how that policy is going to be put into action. In this case, Virginia Code 22.1-276.2 states that the board is responsible for establishing the specifics of the policy that must meet those stated requirements in that code. So in consultation with our attorney, it resulted in what is currently, our regulations are now embedded into your policy, and the regulations will go away. Our attorney recommended this and supports the work that's before you this evening. To walk you through some of that, on lines 15 through 24, we did add explanation of the tier system of responses. That is also part of the VSBA policy. On lines 25 through 80, we embedded the procedures previously maintained in the regulations in order to meet that state code requirement. 26 through 44 reflect the VSBA policy criteria for removing a student from class. Lines 31 through 37, move the notification timeframe from the procedure to policy. You'll see that's a 24-hour timeframe to notify parents. Lines 39 through 41 address referral to the administrator and provides a timeline for that. The line 48 provides the timeline for administrators to respond to a referral. Lines 54 to 69 outline the removal process. Lines 71 through 80 address the procedure for how a student will be returned to class. And lines 87 through 88 add following School Division policy for students with disabilities. As you'll see, it talked about federal and state guidelines, but it didn't talk about our policy. So we wanted to make sure we had federal, state, and local. The regulations that have previously supported this policy will be eliminated since they're now embedded in the policy. There's no need for a supporting regulation. And as I stated with JFC, we have created a standardized incident referral form. It's been developed and will be used beginning next year. It will create consistency across all schools. It will be available for teachers through Teacher View. And we will, of course, do some staff training to help with the implementation of that in support of this policy.
Ms. Pujol, when Mr. Dowell and I went through this, I have to say, I did not even think about the CAC component. And I'm sorry for not bringing that up, but I do think it's worth all of us at least touching on it and wondering whether or not it would make sense in the rationale part of it that we have CAC review it in the lens of special ed.
And that is typically our process, especially for things like restraint and seclusion. All of that went before them, and we brought that to you earlier this year. I will truly tell you, because this was put in as a supporting piece and didn't really change our practice, it was not something that I thought to take before CAC as they were preparing their annual report. I did share it with Mr. Willam, the chairperson, this evening. Obviously, he's not the whole committee, but he felt like it was supportive of what CAC works to do.
Would it be possible to send it back to CAC and then have it come back through policy and then come back to us? Just so the entire CAC? I don't know if they're meeting one more time this year.
They are done for this year.
They're done for this year.
And they did not have a quorum at the last two meetings. We can share it with them, but if you're asking them to vote on it, I'm not.
I can say that it did occur to me when we were reviewing it. And when we were reviewing it, I did recall that we had already seen a restraint recommendation policy or statement from CAC. And so I felt like I should have asked a question, too. Let me put it that way. I should have asked a question, too. I guess I assumed that the department that it was coming from was kind of marrying these timelines, so.
Those are two totally different policies. Restraint and seclusion is totally different than this policy. So it sounds to me like, in order for us to move forward, it's really too late. Otherwise, we're going to push this back to the beginning of the school year.
Is this time-sensitive?
It is related to the student code of conduct, but we can bring those back in August.
So it is, the intent is to fold in regulation into policy, and so this information is kind of out there already, right? And there's no reason why we couldn't approve it now and then bring it back in the fall if CAC has comments in the fall.
I don't think CAC has to take action on it, but I do think, well, I'm sorry. I'll wait for you to call on me.
I'm not calling on you now.
There you are, because I have.
Anybody else besides Mrs. Cook have a comment? Mrs. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So let me step back and just say, I think it was two proposed budgets ago that we wanted to hire someone who was really focused on this sort of data around discipline and who was going to look at MTSS and look at our disproportionality and dive into that. But then that got scuttled with the onset of the pandemic. So when I look at this policy, that's what I think of. And I know that we haven't had the capacity to look at our data because we haven't had that dedicated person, and we're, you know, staffed very thinly in central office. But when I read this, that's exactly what I think of. And I think that ultimately, we're going to need that function because, you know, I would be curious about how removal is, how teachers remove students from class by student population. So whether it's students of color, or free and reduced lunch, or special ed, are they disproportionately impacted? Likewise, do we have teachers who remove students from class with more frequency than others and maybe need some sort of professional development to help with that? Because students learn better, obviously, when they're in class. So I just want to step back and say, I think we really need to look at that and look at our practices on the ground and see what's going on with students, because it's best to keep them in class and not remove them from class when at all possible. That said, we don't have, you know, a committee of families or parents with, who are from free or reduced lunch, or parents of color, but we do have a CAC. And so I do think that anytime we have a policy where marginalized populations are disproportionately impacted, it should go through. I just think that should be our practice. Doesn't have to be voted on, but I do think, even if there's only, even if there's no recommended change, if it's part of our every-five-year-or-less review, I just think that as, to learn, to learn, we should be sending policies through to hear from families, even if we disagree with what they say to us, but we're listening. And so I'm prepared to take action, but I do think this needs to go through, just here. Is it? I'm sorry.
Ms. Hummel?
Since I haven't served on the CAC Committee, is it something that could be, that this could just be placed on the beginning of the year so that they understand what happened? And just for their awareness and any comments that may come up that you could then share with us or whoever's on the committee? It won't be you.
It will not be me.
But that the board representative could share with the rest of the board?
It will be you. She's September?
Moving along.
Moving along. So I like Mr. Kelly's idea. I think we need to act on this because it's time-sensitive, but I don't know why we couldn't then put it back on our ticker to come back through Policy Committee and have CAC look at it again. I think we just need to get in the habit, to echo what Ms. Cook said, to make sure that we allow CAC to do their federally mandated job of reviewing policies and giving input when it impacts students with disabilities. So if we have to vote on this now because it's time-sensitive and it impacts the code of conduct, that doesn't preclude that we could not send it back through CAC in September for whoever is there.
We can certainly do that. And yes, it was an oversight on our part this time to not take it formally through CAC, because I know that's an expected practice that we had set up over time. Because there was little change and it was moving information from regulation to policy, it was different this time. But I still think moving forward, Ms. Pujol and I have talked and both agreed that we just need to really make that our standard practice. Not every policy, but those that could disproportionately affect special education students or affect students with disabilities in some way. Moving forward, we will certainly do that, and our apologies for the oversight this time.
And then, just to be clear, so we're now putting regulation in a policy, which over the last year or so, we've been doing the opposite, just to make that clear.
And our attorney still recommends as a general practice that we do the opposite. It's how the code that drives this leads us to do this.
No, no, I understood. I just wanted to make that clear. So it will stand out and look different as we're culling through all the policies, trying to separate policy from regs. This one will stand and look very different.
Absolutely.
Any other comments? So we'll leave this on the agenda for next time?
Can someone make sure that it, can someone, Ms. Oller make sure that it percolates back through?
We'll make sure it's on the agenda for the first meeting next year.
And then we'll bring it to the October policy meeting after the September CAC meeting.
That'd be great.
We'll put it on the agenda.
And we'll be like, why are we looking at this again?
Just looked at this.
We'll remind you. We'll remind you. It's all good.
I'll remember. 804, Revised and Renamed Policy, GAE, JHG, JHG, GAE, Reporting Child Abuse or Neglect to Child Abuse and Neglect Reporting. Ms. Pujol?
Yes. This is a revision to align with our VSBA model policy. This policy is housed in both the Personnel Section as GAE and the Students Section as JHG of our policy manual, so that is why you get all those extra letters. The policy revision components include deleting the wording about principal notification. This was done purposely to emphasize the mandated reporting status of all of our staff. We also removed the redundancy regarding immunity from civil or criminal liability. We added wording to develop an inter-agency agreement with our child protective services organizations, of which we have two. And we removed the monetary penalty wording as this is connected to the state code. It's not a division policy. These revised regulations will be provided to all staff upon approval, and staff training will occur annually at the beginning of each school year.
805, Revised and Recode Policy LE to LA Relations with Colleges and Universities.
Good evening. I'm here to present a recommendation to revise and recode Policy LE, Education Agency Relations. This policy pertains to our relations with colleges and universities, including opportunities for research and professional development. The revisions align with the Virginia School Board Association VSBA model policy. The recommendations were reviewed and accepted by our School Division Policy Committee on May 20. And the policy revision components include the following. We're recommending we recode the policy from LE to LA in alignment with VSBA. The addition of lines 6 through 14 align with the VSBA policy. And in the third paragraph, beginning on line 14, we also incorporate more collaborative language as recommended by the Policy Committee. And the last sentence was deleted from our policy by recommendation of our attorney. Do you have any questions on Policy LE now recoded as LA? I'd be glad to answer them for you.
Any comments? Okay. I think we're good. I know I wasn't here for the student conduct discussion, but I always have to kind of chuckle when I read in there that we expect our students to turn off their electronic devices when they enter the building. I don't know who we think we're kidding, but we might as well. That takes us to 9.01, Approved Policy LE to LA Relations with Colleges and Universities.
we think we're kidding, but we might as well. That takes us to 9.01, Approval of Personnel Actions. Can I get a motion to approve the personnel actions as presented this evening?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the personnel actions as presented this evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Dowell, thank you for the second. Mrs. Cook, any discussion? Mrs. Aller?
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye, thank you. 9.2, Approval to Amend the Fiscal Year '21 Operating Fund Budget. Mrs. Cook, do we have to say this again, or are we good?
Can we just ask Ms. Aller to note our statements again, please?
Yes, noted.
Perfect. Can I get a motion for approval to amend the fiscal year '21 operating fund budget?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the amendment of the fiscal year '21 operating fund budget to $147,832,700.
Thank you, Mrs. Young. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Ombi. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Aller?
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye, thank you. 9.03, Can I get a motion for approval of purchase requests for open-door alarms, intercom systems, and internal notification systems and the associated budget transfer?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve purchase and installation requests for open-door alarms from Richmond Alarm and Internal Notification Intercom Systems from OpTec and the associated budget transfer of $466,000.
Thank you, Mr. Dowell. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. Is there any discussion? Good discussion, but this is our action meeting in the beginning of the month. Aller?
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye, thank you. 9.03, Approval of Purchase Requests for Elementary Mathematics Instructional Teacher Kits and Associated Budget Transfer. Can I have a motion, please?
I'm, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the purchase requests for elementary mathematics instructional teacher kits to Dyax Inc. and the associated budget transfer in the amount
$139.91. Thank you, Dr. Beers. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Aller?
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye, thank you. 9.05, Approval of Pay Scales and Classification Plan as amended. Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the pay scales and classification plan for fiscal year 2021, 2022 as amended.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Ombi. Thank you, Ms. Young. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Aller?
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye, thank you. 10.01, Board Member Comments. Mrs. Hummel?
I have no comments.
Mrs. Cook?
No comments, sir.
Mrs. Young?
No comments.
Dr. Beers?
No comment.
Wow, I'd have one.
Of course you do.
Wow, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Here I go, really fast. So I just want to let the community know. I know before I came to the meeting tonight, both of my phones lit up buzz buzz with a division-wide survey. Dr. Herr referenced that in her opening remarks. So we're trying to access federal dollars to use for COVID mitigation. And so that survey is required in order to access those funds. And I, and I don't want anyone to think that we're trying to pit different priorities. Priorities, or groups, one over the other. So it just really is one piece of the puzzle that we will use to help us decide how we will best support our students with their learning and COVID loss. So please fill out your survey, and there was no, no malice. It was about accessing dollars to support our students.
Thank you, Mrs. Ombi. Is that all?
If I could, just maybe five more minutes?
Sure. Right after I hit the gavel, we'll be happy to give it to you.
Done.
Mr. Dowell?
Ms. Ombi took my one, but I thought of another one. But thank you for, to all of our speakers tonight, our presenters. Thank you for staff for providing all the content that you've given to us. And that's it. Just a lot of gratitude. So thank you.
Upcoming events. Lots of upcoming events here at the end of the school year, as always. I have no idea how to pronounce this, but I'll try it. Joel A. Electrical School Bus Rollout Event, June 9, 10:30 at the operations where we get our Dominion School Buses. Also on June 9, GED ISAEP Program Completion Ceremony, one of my most favorite events of every school year, June 9 at 6 o'clock at Lafayette High School. We have parades on Duke of Gloucester Street, War Hill High School's June 15 at 5:30, Lafayette's June 16 at 5:30, and Jamestown's June 17 at 5:30. Please, everyone, come out and help celebrate this, our senior class who've had the most difficult time in the COVID extravaganza. So come out and help show some, show some support and congratulations to our graduates who will be graduating. Lafayette graduates June 18 at 9 o'clock at the stadium. War Hill graduates June 18 at 3 o'clock at the stadium, and Jamestown graduates June 19 at 9 o'clock at the stadium. And the Policy Committee meets June 24 at 9:45 in a virtual manner. Our next meeting is June 15 at 7 o'clock, as begins our closed session at the Stryker Center, and the regular meeting begins at 7:30 to make way for the Duke of Gloucester Parade for?
War Hill.
War Hill. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Didn't want to have to go back. Our next meeting after that is July 13, closed session, 6 o'clock here in Room 300. Work session, July 7, July 13, 6:30 following the closed session, also here in Room 300. Mrs. Aller, I think we know what we're doing. Next meeting, any, any concern about putting the policies on the consent agenda? All good with that? So we'll put the policies on the consent agenda? And we're good. So without objection, and I'm sure I will hear none, we are adjourned.